On his grant, um, in working with the Board of Commissioners, he revised his amount before he and represented it to us once. And knocked a couple hundred thousand dollars off the initial proposal. So, uh, he did that in the spirit of not being greedy and trying to make sure enough money was spread around. Being that he did shave it down a lot from the original proposal, um, he's just asking to, to replace one of the things that was denied there without increasing the price tag of the request that he had. Am I, am I correct with that?
That's right, sir.
Okay, um, and your proposal, what, what part of it would you like to replace? What is the?
Anso system and ar- architectural fees.
Okay, which would not have been included initially, it would have been out of your pocket.
Yes, yes.
To do that stuff, uh, and this is the, this is the project for those listening, uh, with the Combined Health District to provide, uh, point service, um, basically in a hot zone of, of where a lot of the health, county health department activity occurs in Warren Township.
That's correct.
Um, Warren City has their own health department, this is Warren Township, uh, also being that we moved the health department of Cortland further away from the constituency in Warren Township, um, this still leaves a presence uh, in your community in that, in that part of town in, in Warren Township that is, uh, more accessible, um, to the, the public there.
Absolutely.
And, and with the services you're gonna be providing, that is a service as he brought up in our meeting before, um, there are a lot of people without public transportation, there are a lot of people in that area, um, that are of lower income, um, that this provides something right in their backyard. And, and again, it is been delineated by our health department as a hot zone for, um, a lot of, um, medical issues and a lot of things, the health department, uh, immunizations, things like that, that the health department deals with on a daily basis.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, so the, what you are trying to reapply, I guess we would do, two questions, one for the Commissioners. I, I assume that we'll just do, I send them a new application and just do a separate application for those that they wanna add, because we've already been through the process, other than the resolution and agreement for the one seventy-eight, um, oh, sorry, we're just waiting on the resolution, we requested the resolution and agreement for that part of it.
Okay.
Um, so I, I assume you would want me to do that. And then the second part of this is the, uh, cost for what you're trying to replace with fifty thousand dollars, is this going to be comparable to that, or, uh, just for my own information and moving forward?
Um, probably, there will be price, since the time we had those estimates.
Right.
There's some price changes that's gonna be affecting that initial, uh, amount that we requested. Um, basically what we wanted to do is to try to keep, step with the, uh, two hundred and twenty.
Twenty-eight, so it would be, it would be comparable to the fifty that you're replacing, alright, okay.
It would be within that time.
So what I, if the Commissioners want to do this, if both of you do?
Uh, just to be clear though, and to put it transparent, when you initially had your proposal for the up grant, it was include, this part was included in there.
Yeah, we, we reduced.
So when you pared it down.
You pared it down, and then, and, and what we had submitted to legal was the, uh, was the two twenty-eight.
Right.
Which included the flooring.
And then the flooring got deemed that it was impossible to do.
Right, right.
So now it's just based on.
And also on architectural fees.
Right, and so what we would do then is do a new application and we would go ahead and, and because it's kind of with this, send it on as a, as a priority now?
Yes, I would do that. If, uh, she gets this resolution for the first part, I'm not in opposition of voting on that first and voting on this at a separate time. I don't know, I don't know if we wanna wait and put it all together and then that delays any of the funds further.
I think it probably would give them some funding now and then that would be helpful to them.
We need to get started.
Yes, so Bishop, um, if that's okay with both Commissioners, okay?
Absolutely.
I wanna make sure I have the time because we send that out to the legal so they can look at it.
Well, and then we, we know, we already got the first part of it approved and done, so that's, that's good.
Right, that's, we're just waiting the resolution to.
If for some reason, sky falls out something else, this is a separate entity thing that we weren't really counting on, but we are moving it forward, we'll fast track it.
Right, well, and I can tell you that, um, there was, and, and I can't tell you exactly how it was because again, Mr. Masaki handled that part of this. But I believe that they actually, she actually initially looked at the original application and approved everything except the flooring, so I think this is going to be just, hey, sign off on this and let's move forward. So I think that it'll be fairly quick on that, just to let you know. But what I'll do, the email that I utilized for you was good. I will send you a blank application to go ahead and, and redo that and re-submit the, the estimated cost for the architecture.
Now, should we go back and review all of the estimates that we've received, or since the time we got those numbers?
I would say for up to the fifty thousand that you're replacing, you need to find something comparable, make sure it's not gonna be over or whatever. It's something that's gonna fit within that, and if it's forty-six, then that's for forty-six, you know, that's for, that's for real numbers on that.
I got you.
Just not a blank fifty thousand dollar check to fill in the blanks.
She had just some estimates so that we can, she, we have something that backs up.
For sure.
Right.
We can take that.
But I'll send that out to you and, um, we'll, once we get it, we'll send it off to, um, to Attorney Rogers, alright?
Sounds good.
First of all, I'd like to, uh, say thank you to the Commissioners on behalf of Community Family Complex as well as former county Health Department, Frank, Mrs. Lulzey, uh, for giving the opportunity, which I think is essentially important, that we do provide that information through education and through an area where we can kinda do a lot of preventative work in terms of helping to keep our children healthy and to keep the opportunity of having a bi- a visible light and a green light in a community where we've invested, uh, one point five million dollars in an area where most people had encouraged us to put something else down there business-wise, making money. But we felt we needed to invest in the real soul of our community is families, people. So again, on behalf of our staff and also, um, Frank, Trumbull County Health Department, I wanna thank you all for your vote of confidence. And Happy New Year.
If anyone hasn't seen the complex in the facility, it's an amazing facility and the investment that Bishop Perrin has made in, in Trumbull County is phenomenal. And this, as, as Commissioner Malloy said, is gonna go to, directly to the heart of the problem that we have, uh, in that underserved community. So, uh, we're something we're very proud of and it was a very unique proposal along with the, along with the Health District, so, uh, we're gonna move forward on it and we thank you.
Thank you so much. God bless everyone.
Nice to meet you, Mrs. Perrin. You dressed him well.
Forty-four years, she's had a lot of practice. Thank you all. Bye, Happy New Year.
All right, Alex, you wanna move up to the table, Gary maybe?
Sure.
Did you guys have a?
Nobody puts that out in the corner.
Okay, Mar, before we start the agenda too, in fairness too, there's some of the people hung out from our last, we had an Enterprise Zone meeting, um, moments ago before this meeting in regards to the tax abatement, is there anything to discuss with this, thoughts, feelings, things before it is on the agenda for tomorrow, so if we're gonna talk about, let's publicly do that.
I will say, obviously the resolution by, uh, the City of Warren, even though it is rather technical and not so much substantial, gives me pause because in our business, we have to vote on things that are precise and exact, and I think that they need to know exactly what they're voting on. Uh, if there was a clerque where that was sort of misleading, that needs to be cleared up. And what gives me pause is obviously the, I, I know it doesn't need to be there, but the school board or the school superintendent from TCTC letter, obviously, uh, whenever we know that the schools are gonna be affected, um, you know, and, and to see that usually we have, with these things, there's, there's a hundred percent agreement across communities and across districts, so, uh, to see that gives me pause, so I, I'll be honest.
I've got three things with it. One, I'm glad to see new growth, I'm glad to see people reinvesting in the community, I'm glad to see people growing in the community.
Absolutely.
That's, that's good signs, good financial indicators that people are growing here, so I don't wanna thwart that, resist that, hurt that in any way, shape or form. Um, secondly, i- in regards to the letter, I was, I was a little surprised to see a letter in opposition from the superintendent. When I looked at the dates, when the letters went out, we were talking late December, um, you had Christmas holiday, you had New Year's holiday, you had school vacation in the middle of that time, so maybe there is a chance that Mr. Gray and LeBrey and Warren City Schools didn't get that stuff. They got it timely, but mo- a majority of that time, school was not in session. So, um, I would like to make sure they got it and check with the other schools to see if they got it and what their thoughts were. If there was a clerical mistake, of course, we want things to be correct on there. A million dollars versus, a quarter million dollars is a big difference. I don't know if that means anything to the Warren City Council members, I'm not gonna try to put myself inside of their minds or, or their thoughts with that. Um, but then again, we did agree on the initial investment there to give them a tax abatement, and if they're growing in the same spot, um, that probably ties in with a business plan, that, that they're, they're counting on budgeting with what they have until that time comes as they grow. And a lot of people dump money back into business to grow initially, and that's good, that's built a solid foundation and solid roots in the county, so there's that part of it. Um, being that there was opposition, there was schools, you know, those are things just going through my mind right now. I do agree that, I, I trust our planning commission is in, uh, sounds like in support of this, um.
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission, um, I, I wanna clarify, is, we are in support of businesses growing within Trumbull County. As far, as far as taking a stance on individual projects, uh, we need to abstain from either being in favor or being opposed to. Our job is to administer the Enterprise Zone program as, uh, in accordance with the higher revised code, so, uh, we, we encourage all business to either locate or expand in Trumbull County, but individual projects, we abstain from opposing or supporting.
Gotcha, gotcha. Then support of the process then, I guess?
Yes.
Walk you through the process. Um, the other ones I've been involved in, I haven't had too many of these, was fully supported by Liberty School Board, that, that they supported the one we did in Liberty. Uh, was fully supported by all three trustees, um, and there was no opposition, this is the first time we've had, I've dealt with, where there was some opposition and, and that needs to be taken under consideration in a sense too. I, I also wanna look into, and Commissioner, help me out on this, 'cause you've got far more experience than I do. Have you done them before in Trumbull County where it was a fifty percent tax abatement or sixty percent or that seventy-five percent, where does that number come from? Or is that just as much as they can get without having to go the next step? You know, is there, is there a middle ground there somewhere that you've ever dealt with before? And Nick, maybe you can give me advice on other abatements that you've been a part of the planning commission, just the facts, not opinion of it, but just the facts of that. 'Cause it does say in the Enterprise Zone Agreement, right on the first page, right on the second paragraph, from the Ohio Department of Development, this is a last chance resort, uh, to use the tax abatement as a last resort.
Uh, Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission, so the Enterprise Zone is, is, uh, is one of the only incentives that we have locally. Uh, we do have some workforce development reimbursement training grants, the rest of our incentives generally come through the state Jobs Ohio Organization. Um, they're very picky about what they support, uh, normally it's gonna be the big flash of projects that's gonna get the name in the paper. Um, uh, local business that's existing, expanding generally doesn't fit that category. Uh, so there is unfortunately not a whole lot of incentives or support for small projects like this outside of tax incentives that we do locally. That being said, uh, there, the Enterprise Zone in incorporated areas is allowed to go up to seventy-five percent for ten years, um, with a notification to the school, exceeding that would require school board approval. Unincorporated areas, so all of our townships can go up to sixty percent for ten years, um, with notification to the school. Anything above that would be, would require school approval. Um, there has, so i- in the initial resolution passed by the Commissioners in nineteen ninety-four, they delegated all negotiating, negotiating capacity to the community affected. Uh, in this case, it was the city of Warren, and so, um, in, in other areas, um, and in past, sometimes that abatement is negotiated. We currently have one that's in, uh, Warren Township, uh, that they requested sixty percent for ten years. Warren Township negotiated them down to forty percent for ten years, uh, similar in Lordstown, there was a seventy-five percent request for ten years. They negotiated sixty percent for ten years, um, at this point, the, the representative for the city of Warren did not negotiate down from seventy-five percent for ten years. That was, um, they, they felt comfortable with that based on my conversation with that percentage request to take to the, uh, city council. So, yes, it's, it has been done, but that negotiation is technically, um, has always been done with the representative of that community and the company. Um, it's something that we tried to abstain from and not put our influence into because of that original resolution, uh, the Commissioners delegating all of that authority to the local community.
So in other words, you're not the one, or we're not the ones that are negotiating it by resolution from the Commissioners since nineteen ninety-four, the local communities have been the ones.
Correct, yes.
That have done it. Now, if we wanna change that, we can certainly change that, have the Commissioners be the negotiating.
Yeah.
On these.
And that's, there's thirty affected communities by that, so you would.
Right.
You, you would have to go on a campaign and get, um, get their input and, uh, or approval to, to change your resolution, not, otherwise, um, uh, we, we looked at this a couple.
Two years ago.
Yes, several years ago, we looked at it and there was some opposition and, and it, um, kinda fell out just because there was opposition from the communities that they did not wanna relinquish their ability to, to, to negotiate. Um, that also being that communities have negotiated, uh, we have two on there for a hundred percent for fifteen years. Um, they've gotten school board approval, generally what happens with that is the schools get a payment in lieu of taxes. They would give them their, their portion of whatever property taxes collected. There's also a clause in the revised code itself, um, any job creation over a million dollars, uh, or, I'm sorry, any job creation that, that creates a million dollars in, uh, taxable payroll, that income taxes split fifty-fifty with the school district and the, uh, community collecting it as well.
Okay, uh, and educate me on this, the one, one big, one big question I have with this. As far as the Trumbull County taxpayers, the, the things that tomorrow and I have oversight on in regards to this. The, the taxes that are abated are gonna be collected by.
The Trumbull County Treasurer.
Uh, Trumbull County Treasurer, they are gonna be sent back through that to the municipality where it occurred. So Warren is the one really that has the skin of the game as far as losing revenue, not so much the county coffers?
So, not exactly, um, the way, with the property taxes based on, you know, a total, you have your approved millage and then your effective rate. But that approved mills, uh, there's twelve point three mills for the Trumbull County and, um, each district is different. So the schools will have millage on there, the affected community will have millage on there, sometimes there's special districts. Uh, the Joint Vocational, I think, has like a two point one mill across the county, um, so all of those go in, Trumbull County Treasurer collects it and then disperses it, the respective amount to that, um, to, to each taxing district, what they, what they should receive. So this would be an abatement on the overall rate, and so it reduces everybody's, every, every party's portion of it by that percentage.
Um, have, have we crunched the numbers to see exactly a year, how much we're talking here? Because we can talk in circles about this, but until we know exactly what the effect is.
So everything that we do is based on an estimated appraisal, um, we have a disclaimer that all appraisals cannot be known until the actual building is built. Uh, we're just putting together an estimate based on like-sized buildings and information provided by the company. So those figures can change, normally not very drastically, uh, I think in our Auditor's Office, our appraisers are very good at what they do. Uh, but it is always a disclaimer that it is just a, just an estimate, um, so that's the best we can do with the information provided.
These are for both parcels?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, with that, we, we use the effective rates, um, to figure out how much could possibly be abated, um, for each taxing district. Um, so we, we do have a, a spreadsheet that is, that we, we normally do, do not like to release out, uh, because it is just an estimate. Um, and we don't want these, somebody grabbing a hold of it saying these are hard and fast numbers, they are just estimates. But we do work with the Auditor's Office, the Appraisers crunch the numbers and provide that to the city and company products negotiation.
And one other thing that I just realized while reading through this stuff. If it was over seventy-five percent, they would need school board approval and they'd like to notify the schools. Mr. Gray is the principal of TCTC, he's not president of the board. So it's not, he's not speaking on behalf of the board that hires him, he's speaking on behalf of his being a principal. So technically, his approval is separate from the, I would imagine, is separate from the school board's approval. So his letter is valid in a sense, but it's not speaking on behalf of TCTC School Board, I don't believe.
I thought he was superintendent.
Superintendent.
Yeah. So he does speak for the board?
Yes.
I mean.
He is, he's superintendent.
Well, he's appointed by the board.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, he works for the board.
Right, but, I mean, he's their spokesman, I mean typically.
Yeah, he, he, he's the superintendent and, and I, I don't know the section off the top of my head, but there's a revised code section that deals with the, uh, notifications to school boards, their representative is technically the treasurer. We send a letter to the treasurer and the superintendent, um, generally because the superintendent is the one that's doing a lot of the day-to-day work, the, and the treasurer's doing the financial, but there is a letter to both superintendent and treasurer, um, and in this case, there was a follow-up email because of the holidays. Uh, you know, I, I know schools were out over, over that period of time, but, um, with the letters and, and the, uh, follow-up emails sent as well to both the superintendent and treasurer of each school district.
So would we assume then that he does have the power to speak on behalf of the school board?
I think so.
Yes.
Um. Individual school board.
Just wanna make sure.
Just as an administrator for us would be able to speak for the board, in, in the same capacity.
Okay, man, I don't know, I mean, you got the letter, you said you called him yesterday and he got the letter. I just wanna make sure, you know, the board is aware of it and it wasn't him just making a decision on behalf, that, to make sure it's not later we come back and the school board says, eh, we never really voted on this, his letter was separate, just wanna make sure that's legit.
I, I, I think in the respect of an administrative speaking for the Commissioners, if, if there is a difference of opinion, it would have to be done formally. I don't know that any of that has happened, um, I'm pretty positive it has not. But, um, I, I believe as the superintendent, he would have the, the sense of what the board thinks and will be able to speak on behalf of them.
So obviously when we break it down to foregone loss or whatever between county schools, JV, JBS, township, special districts, schools lose out probably the most.
That is normally the case in, in every taxing district, the, the schools.
Because they have the most knowledge, yeah.
Take up fifty to sixty percent of most property tax.
That's where we collect sales tax for the majority of line share of our spend, you know.
Yeah.
And right now, the value of the land, of what they're losing or what they're paying on right now, what is that value of whatever's gonna score? Is that the sheet you have tomorrow?
I do not have the value of what they're.
What they're paying on it compared to if they do something?
I don't have the value of what they're currently paying, um, the only thing that we crush the numbers on would be appraised va- estimated appraised value of the improvements. So what is existing will stay, they will continue to pay exactly what they're paying now, plus if they do the improvements, a twenty-five percent increase. This is only, uh, uh, foregone on potential improvements, estimated.
And we're talking. We're not losing anything from what it is now by doing this, we'd just be losing on the improvements of what it would be down the road.
Correct.
But, but they have an abatement already on the existing.
On the existing.
So we are, technically, we're not gaining anything there.
Okay, do you have the microphone, we have, we'll take comments.
Jim Taylor with, uh, uh, Building Trade, um, so that was one of my comments was that they, on the original property, there's already a tax abatement on there until twenty twenty-nine. Also, uh, I know, uh, that Commissioner.
The original property that's built or the original raw land?
The, the original structure that's there right now.
Okay.
Okay, true. Then the se- the, the second parcel.
Is there? Okay. So there is not an abatement on the second parcel, the new parcel that you're gonna add to? There's no abatement on that, okay.
The other thing is, is I know, uh, Commissioner Kyma Mesa was here in a tax abatement for DJX. Was highly contested.
It was.
Um, and there was a lot of, uh, discussion on that, um, that was Old Dominion in which, uh, Left Gerard, um, had said that they were, uh, you know, creating jobs in Lordstown, and if you know, anytime Lordstown right now is going through their own little ordeal with tax abatements as well for construction. So it's, I believe that it's a highly contested subject in general.
And, and that is something, I guess, as far as what I know about that. Lordstown is one example we can look at where they've had a lot of tax abatements and their councils basically said enough with the abatements here, which could restrict some growth in that area. Of course, we don't wanna hand out tax abatements to Warren too, where it gets to the point too where people say, well, they got one, then I'm gonna add on two. And I'm gonna add on, then you have, uh, you know, that type of thing, not saying that that is, but it is something, and maybe that's why, that's maybe that's why the Department of Development said this is a last resort type of thing and not to be utilized freely and easily, I, I don't, I don't know, I have to do more research on that. Don, do you have anything else you wanna add to it that we may have overlooked earlier? I wanna give you as much fair. Wait, hold on, hold on, we're gonna need the microphone to capture for the record. Are you doing some math over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm looking at the, uh, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, so I'm looking, there's two parcels here. So I'm looking at the, um, the, the, uh, three nine five six nine three twenty parcel, which is at the address, the twenty-eight sixty-one. And that does not have an abatement on it that I can.
No, it does, that does.
It does, okay, so what we're collecting now.
This is the other one, this last one.
Okay, I see, great.
Martha, anything else?
I don't have anything to add, I think everything's done and said. I'm not sure that it's completely understandable as people would like it to be. I'd like to, I didn't have a chance to look at it and talk to my appraisers either, so, um, I, I've kinda, it's been on my radar, we know it's there. We read the newspaper like everybody else did.
Commissioner, anything else on your end?
No, I just need to digest these numbers a little bit.
Yeah, I would like to see, if possible, um, Martha, if I'd like to see what's being paid now, what would be paid without the tax abatement and what would be paid with the tax abatement, to see, let, talk some real numbers, are we talking a couple thousand dollars? Are we talking, you know, tens of thousands of dollars over that time?
I'll, I'll do, I'll, um, talk to the appraisers and talk to the accountant and we'll see what we can get for you before tomorrow and send it out to you.
And then, I'd like, I'd like that for one, um, I'd like to clarify with the schools or whatever that the other ones did get it and know their opinion, and then if we can talk to somebody from, uh, Warren City to see if that million dollar thing they voted on versus two hundred and sixty thousand seems like it makes a difference or not to them. If there was a unanimous, it doesn't matter if it's two million, three million, we want this, you know, we want this abatement, you know, I, I want, I want their solid opinion to make sure we're dealing apples to apples with that, because that was a technicality that was brought up, but as we know, technicalities could lead to, you know, misinformation and, um, we need to strive at least to be as accurate as we can be with that.
Agree.
Okay. Don, again, thank you for coming with that, Mr. Taylor, thank you for your participation, and, uh, anyone else have something that needs to go to the top before we dig into this? And anyone else have something that needs to go to the top before we dig into this? That has any other obligations? Okay, we'll start into our regular agenda then. All right, number one, dispense with the reading in a minute. Number two, approve the bills. Number three, execute a letter of support for Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership to express full support of the Trumbull County Land Reutilization Corporation's grant application to the Ohio Department of Development's Brownfield Remediation Program and authorize Denny Malloy, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute said letter, request of Mr. Matt Martin. Anyone here from TNP?
Yeah, Ashley here.
Approach.
Just go over it briefly, Ashley, if you can.
What?
For the record, just go over it briefly, please.
Um, we came a few months ago to talk to you guys about the application that we wanted to do for the Brownfield and the Development. Gave us a match commitment letter. We also found out that we needed just like a blanket letter of support for that application, um, just saying that you did support what we're doing with that. And we're asking for today is just that letter to go with our match commitment.
To support without a dollar figure tax or anything to support?
Yep, just the support of the application.
Sounds good.
And that's not gonna be in competition with any other grants that we're seeking or anything like that.
No, no.
It's not gonna interfere with anything.
We're the only one that can apply for that, so.
Important to know.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, approve the extension of time to purchase dog license tags for one additional month to the end of the business day on Thursday, February twenty-ninth, for recommendation, Martha Yoder. Martha, I know sales have been good from what you said, and you want to keep it rolling with the fee. And what is the difference between what they pay now and what they would pay later?
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, after, if you approve this after February twenty-ninth, it would be thirty-six dollars instead of eighteen. Allowing that extra month of tags at eighteen dollars gives people a little bit of a grace. And we want compliance. We don't want punishment. As I've said, I'm more carrots than stick, and so that's what we're trying for. In talking to our license clerk, I just kind of touched base with her this morning to see if we could maybe get some numbers of how February has been over the years. Unfortunately, because we were on the old IBM system, we don't have a way of giving you the individual numbers for each month for that. But she did say it's always brisk in February. They always get a lot of applications in February. So we'll put that, if you guys approve this, we'll put, we'll update the website. We'll update with all of our vendors, all of that, so people will get the word out so that people know that they can still get it at eighteen dollars rather than thirty-six.
Okay, what is the fine if they don't get it at all?
Well, well, that's good. Well, there's not a whole lot we could do.
Oh, that's funny, but we get it. I want- I want all the fines that are there.
I will- I will get that figure for you. I don't know, because I believe that's a dog warden function.
Okay.
Not mine. It doesn't go to me.
The thing that bothers me is you don't get it by this date, it's gonna be double. It's gonna be thirty-six. So they're gambling on the eighteen bucks, whatever. Is that really enough incentive for somebody to rush out and get their- get their thing? Do we want to, is someone gonna say, well, I missed the deadline, screw it, I'm not gonna pay double and just not get a tag? I want to sell tags throughout the year, and if somebody wants to buy one in July or August or- or September-
And we do keep selling them.
I- I mean, to penalize them by paying double when they can say, I'm gonna roll the dice. It's a twenty-five dollar fine and fifty if I don't get it at all, I'm just gonna roll the dice on it? Is there a better system we could do that encourages them to buy it whenever they buy it without-
I have to look at the ORC on that, on, because I think the ORC requires us to double it, but I could be wrong. Um, I'm not, I haven't researched that. But I will talk to, um, Michelle about what the fine is, because I believe that that's her department. We don't do compliance other than trying to increase compliance. So we don't like end doubling it.
We just want to sell tags. We just want people to understand this money goes to the dog pound. It goes to support dogs. It's a good thing. It's a good tag.
And I feel like we've tried to really get that message out there with, on both our social media and- and on the website. We've got it really clear that this is what it goes for. We've even included a link to the dog warden so people can see that. My social media for the auditor's office has been really active on trying to make sure people understand it. There are still some people that don't completely get it. I still have people asking me why I don't sell cat licenses, but I try to direct them to the Ohio Revised Code.
How detailed is it when someone gets a dog tag? How detailed is it? Like, if I'm- if I'm a little old widow lady on the street and I love animals and I want to buy licenses for my neighbor's dogs, so how much information do I really need to know?
You do need to have, like, there's name, address, there's, uh, we're trying to get emails so that we can send out notices that way rather than the mail, um, breed, specific years, you know, how old the dog is and things like that. If an old lady wants to do that, she could donate those. And that's, and get, or do, she'd come to me and ask for certificates for people, because I've been doing it.
So they can buy prepaid certificates that they can give out as gifts to their grandkids?
I can create that. I can create that. I'm doing that now. My certificates that I'm doing, that I'm giving away, I'm paying for those and, uh, so that it's paid for and then we could set that up if we wanted to do that.
I'm just thinking, that might be another way to do it. If you've- if you've got kids and grandkids that have dogs and they're, you know, kids are irresponsible, especially in that certain age group where they can barely pay for their lectures. They're not gonna buy a dog license.
When does- when does that stop? I have a twenty-four-year-old.
Well, I get it. I get it. And that would be a- that would be a good gift. He's not gonna go blowing video games and cigarettes or whatever. And you give them the dog license, then at least you're doing something good for the community. Or vaping, you know, video games.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
You'll hate it, but it's really good. You know, a dog will be legal.
Those are good ideas. Well, we'll- we'll see if what we can do on those. And I will get you the information from Michelle as far as what the fine is, because I don't know it off the top of my head.
Twenty-five dollars for the first offense and then no more than seventy-five dollars, second offense.
Thank you.
Seventy-five dollars, no more than two-fifty, and up to thirty days in jail for the ORC. And the deputy dog, the dog warden is in charge of compliance.
Deputy dog.
That is their, the do- the deputy dog, dog, whatever. Doggy dog, you know.
Every time we see deputy dog in these meetings, I have a vision that appears in my head of deputy dog.
Yes, I do. Puppy, whatever.
All right, Martha, great job on that so far. Let's see what we can figure out.
We're working on it. And just to remind folks, every time you, when you buy it, your dog license, you're going into a drawing for a free dog license next year. We're doing, I did, we drew two last week. We sent those out, the certificates out to those folks. And, um, we'll, you know, we'll do, I'll probably do two again. I would only do one.
And there is a special fund. When they buy the dog licenses, that money is going to the dog pound. It's not gonna be utilized for one of your surveyors to go out and look at a property or something. It goes to the dog pound.
We actually, uh, every single penny, like, they don't pay administrative costs. There's no, the eighteen, every penny of that eighteen dollars goes to the dog pound. We don't charge administrative costs. This is our statutory duty. We're required to do it under law, so it's paid for out of our funds to do it, which is why we want to reduce what it costs us to send out those mailings, um, in order, you know, and less mailing, because then it's less money for us. But we, and we want to do the best job we can on this and make sure that we can increase compliance and do it.
And like you said before, don't fall for that three-minute commercial on TV and send your money to someone that's not gonna help one single dog in this county. Buy dog licenses instead of your hearts leading.
And we had a nice article in the paper over the weekend. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Mr. Smith came out to see the dog, uh, the kennel so he could see exactly why it is we need one. And he mentioned that as well, that give locally to, um, to our pound, to some of the local charities, like, uh, the Healthy Hearts and Haws, the Animal Welfare League, Voices for the Trumbull County Pound Dogs, absolutely goes directly to the pound. They've actually, hundred thousand, we said, I think it was a hundred thousand. They gave a hundred thousand dollars in, uh, money and items to the dog pound last year. Agreed.
Ray gets lucky with a good article.
Yeah, yeah.
They're all good, Ray.
We appreciate it, Ray. Thank you.
Okay, number five. Authorize the employment of Ms. Terry Anderson, full-time position nine-one-one supervisor in Trumbull County nine-one-one department, effective Sunday, January twenty-one, to be paid thirty-two-an-hour, pay range ten-ten, based on years of relevant nine-one-one supervisory and leadership experience. Ms. Anderson will serve a hundred-and-eighty-day probationary period, after which, you're paid to move from the pay range ten to pay range step twenty pursuant to job posting October twenty-fourth. So three-dollar raise after she passes that. She's passed pre-employment physical, background check, and drug screening. Casey?
Casey Vaughn, nine-one-one director. We have seventy-eight applicants. Six of those had acceptable prior supervisory experience. We plan to interview all six of those. Two backed out prior, and one was a no-call, no-call, no-show. Terry has an extensive background, over twenty-five years' experience. She's already very familiar with our CAD, our nine-one-one system, our phone system, um, power phone, which is our emergency medical protocol. She has implemented training structures in her previous job, so we're really looking forward to getting her started. She's planning on starting the twenty-first if this passes tomorrow. So we're looking forward to that and then to speak to the next item, just while I'm up here.
Next item, authorize pay increase for current nine-one-one supervisor, Mr. David Vassal, currently at thirty-eight-point-one-nine per hour, and he will go to thirty-six-point-oh-eight per hour, pay range ten, step twenty-seven. Will not have to serve a probationary period, because he's been in that capacity already. And, um, he's been with the nine-one-one center for twenty-seven years, so it'll realign him with where he needs to be and moving up to pay ranges.
Correct. That just goes along with the new restructuring that was, uh, recommended by HR in order to give steps for dispatchers to eventually move up that foot and bulk, as a lot of them have been in those positions that are stagnant, no upward mobility or growth. David has been a supervisor, so we recently had a meeting with him to inform of this possible change, pending this going through, and kind of realigned with the new job duties, the, um, expectations that we have moving forward now that we're trying to make some changes.
Elevated expectations. With an elevated expectation.
Elevated expectations, along with just the general change in direction of trying to take things. Nine-one-one center, along with me and Terry. Most likely, we're gonna try to do a flex schedule, then we're getting twelve-hour shifts, so we have twenty-four-hour coverage, with the exception of their days off. And looking forward to seeing how this goes and how long in our process.
Well, I'm glad to see David's been with us for a long time, twenty-seven years, and I'm glad to see him being rewarded with an actual title, a structure. The pay raise is well-deserved for him after all these years of service, being kind of the only supervisor that's been a supervisor for twenty-some years. Um, you know, we- we look for him to lead the way a little bit with his new people too. Teach them the ropes. And Alexandra, you okay with the first one?
Um-
Ten, ten to ten-twenty?
We've actually gone back and forth quite a few times, so this was what we agreed on. They obviously proposed higher, and I- I can't stand for what was initially proposed. So, uh, what I did was I grabbed her wages from where she was prior and made it comparable to that, a little bit more than that. So obviously, we're enticing her. She's coming from Utah, so we want to have people relocate. We want people to work in Trumbull County. So, um, what I did was I made it a little bit more comparable with where she was before and where I feel like we need to be competitive here in Trumbull County, but not to the point where we're too high.
Right.
So with that being said, Casey and I have worked very well through that process. So thank you, Casey. I know she wasn't thrilled with my pushback, but I do feel like this is a competitive offer. And also, if you look at where they're in line with David Vassal, I didn't want a new supervisor coming in, making as much of somebody who's been there for twenty-seven years. I feel like that's extremely unfair. Uh, so this is the best for the entire nine-one-one, um, structure. This is something that I'm really proud of, and I'm so proud of Casey and Patty for working with me through this. Uh, this almost completes our complete, uh, restructuring. So we still have one current open nine-one-one supervisor position. Like I said, the goal was always to get somebody internally, I mean, come up from a telecommunicator. Maybe that'll happen once they see, you know, what this is all about. Uh, we had a long meeting yesterday with Mr. Vassal. We've redone the job descriptions. We expect that with this, you know, increase in pay. There's gonna be more responsibilities, more duties, more accountability, and we're ready to roll, so I'm really excited for them. And I think that the twelve-hour shift with the supervisors are gonna be great. And the last thing I want to point out to commissioners is that will hopefully eliminate these acting supervisors too. So we're really getting to a place where we're getting towards accountability and a true hierarchy where hopefully nine-one-one will thrive in.
Yes.
So thank you.
Okay, so are we looking to hire the third one now? Or are we gonna let these guys get established and then hire?
Yes. So we had, of course, there were five candidates that I agree with Casey. Actually, Casey and I both picked the same five candidates, which is amazing. Uh, but with that being said, the third one that came in third place, um, only one year's supervisory skill in nine-one-one. We kind of would prefer to hold off and see where we're at with these two, how they work together, uh, kind of see how it evolves. And then maybe, I hate to say it again, but if a telecommunicator comes out and is like, you know what? I've seen this. It works. We want to see succession planning within our entity. So that would be the best case scenario in my opinion, but of course, Casey's the director, so.
Yep. I'm in- I'm in agreement with Alex. I think right now, I don't want to add too much to the kind of fire of, we're already trying to do a bunch of changes. We're trying to, you know, looking at new buildings, all kinds of things, all encompassing all the way around. Um, I think what we're seeing from Terry and her background and what she's done previously is I think she's gonna come in and kind of infuse David with some new ideas. Um, and I think they're gonna work well together, kind of in tandem, and hopefully, we can get that kind of implemented and going. And then potentially, like Alex said, maybe one of the actives will decide that, you know, they've seen a change and are willing to kind of step up and take the initiative.
So on these days off now, because if they're working twelve, on those days off, it'll still be a telecommunicator acting?
You'll have one acting. Yep. We'll- we'll go from what we have, three, four.
There'll still be some shifts that are gonna be covered with acting for days off.
So when they're acting on those days, are they gonna be paid at a range ten? They're gonna jump all the way up to range ten?
They're gonna be, so that's per contract. So that is per contract, because they're still union. So they're gonna be paid at the acting supervisor wage per their contract, because they're union. This is non-bargaining.
When is that contract up?
Uh, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay.
Yep.
So by then, we won't have to worry about them trying to renegotiate or anything?
By then, we'll hopefully get rid of acting supervisors, period, because we've proven, and this is nothing against nine-one-one, but again, I had this conversation last week about union being supervisors. It does not work well. There is a lack of accountability. Uh, they don't want to hold people accountable, because you're their union staff rep, but yet you're their manager. So are you really going to be holding them accountable? Not so much. And we've seen that at nine-one-one. I've seen that personally. So I- I'm not gonna advocate in the next contract for acting supervisors. We need actual non-bargaining supervisors.
To what Alex was saying too, contractually, they are being compensated as acting. They get a percentage for acting in that capacity while they're on that shift.
Correct.
And yes, obviously, the past several years, there's been more acting than just that turnover rate and supervisors who've lost and-
But on days where you have a supervisor, they might be making thirty-seven dollars an hour. Then the acting might be making twenty-five dollars an hour on the days where they're acting.
Which should entice them to actually apply for a supervisor position.
And when there's a supervisor there, there will be nobody being paid as acting, because they're not acting. They're only there in lieu of the supervisor.
All right, and then supervision-wise, the telecommunicators, are they gonna answer to the supervisors? Or are they gonna answer directly to Patty or you? Is there gonna be a line of-
Ultimately, the chain of command will be, the telecommunicators will respond to the floor supervisors, which will be David and Terry, who then will obviously report to Patty and I on a food chain. Obviously, if there's a major issue, we'll be in the loop of what's going on, but ultimately-
But their first line of supervision is gonna be their supervisor?
Correct. And ultimately, that first line of supervision is-
Which hasn't been that way for a long, long time.
Correct. And hopefully, that will be the, they will filter a lot of things that don't need to come upstairs and do the things we need to do.
Very good. Positive.
It is gonna take time, though. I have- I have to say that. Yesterday was our first meeting of many that I think are to come, just with resetting expectations and roles and responsibilities. So just bear with us, but know that we're- we're working on it, so.
Very good. Okay, number seven. Enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Western Reserve Transit Authority and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners with respect to use of administration of federal grant funds to be issued by the Federal Transit Administration with the consent of Ohio Department of Transportation. WRTA will provide two fixed routes for public transit service in Trumbull County for a period of one year from March twenty-twenty-four to March twenty-twenty-five. The FTA has issued a grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-three-fifty-seven to fund the operation of two fixed bus routes in Trumbull County that will run Monday through Friday for the purpose of providing public transportation service to the general public in Trumbull County. The ODOT has agreed to authorize the transfer of federal flex funds necessary to facilitate the issuance of the federal grant by FTA, providing that Trumbull County agrees to pay the local share funds in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-three-fifty-seven pursuant to the terms and conditions of a written MOU. Um, this was something that was brought up by Mike, meeting with the state and with Mr. Keno Mesa. And from what I understand, though, from the talks we had before, ODOT's gonna put up half, we're gonna put up half, but out of our half, we're gonna have an MOU with the city warned they're gonna pay one-fifty or not. I don't see that in this- in this agreement here. Mike?
That's one of the questions I've got, but, um-
Now, you addressed who you are, Mike, and-
Yeah, Mike Zalmitch, Trumbull County Transit. So regarding this MOU, uh, the grant amount that we're getting is correct, two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-three-fifty-seven. Federal funds going to WRTA from ODOT, from the, from the feds. Uh, the city of Warren- The city of Warren, uh, will go into council January twenty fifth to approve the half of a hundred forty eight thousand one seventy eight fifty. That's, so that's kinda where, do we wanna put it in here or not? Because they haven't gone to council yet. It hasn't been approved. But they are supposed to go to council January twenty fifth for the approval. If it is approved, I would come back at that time with an MOU similar to this one for them to put in half of the amount. So, commissions will only be putting in a hundred forty eight one seventy eight fifty. With this, we will be billed monthly. So, the question is, who does the invoice go to? That's what we have to figure out too. Regarding the routes, there are two routes. One is seventy three, it's called seventy three west. And this will start at seven o'clock in the morning, go to five o'clock, do runs every hour. And it basically travels down Market Street, Todd, um, northwest, Northwood Street, Northfield Avenue, uh, to Parkland Road. The other one is gonna be called Route seventy four. It's the Elm Road route. That will start at six thirty, run every hour the same way till five o'clock. And basically goes right down Elm Road out to Walmart and comes back in.
And these are two of the five routes we had before. Those are the two most popular?
Those are the two most popular. I was looking at the numbers. Those are the two most popular, yeah.
By far, the two most popular.
Yeah.
On the city of Warren, um, I believe it's imperative that we, that we either, you know, one of the commissioners, Mike, we need to be at that council meeting and talk about the importance of the city of Warren coming together on this in the spirit of cooperation. Approximately eighty to ninety percent of our riders are from the city of Warren.
Right.
This is something that they have to con, they don't have to contribute to, but that would show a good faith response.
Right. I don't wanna, personally, I don't wanna agree to this until we have the commitment from the city of Warren. That's something that.
But are we up against a deadline? That's the problem.
Yeah.
Does this have to be done today?
Warren's gotta have some skin in the game on this thing. We talked about it when we had the meeting. That's when we had the meetings. We said Warren was in. Warren's gotta pony up because if they don't do it, then we're on the hook for paying the whole amount after we agree to this thing and it's rolling. Warren's gonna get the credit for it. Warren residents are gonna get the credit. Warren councilmen aren't gonna get phone calls complaining about no service anymore. It's all gonna be on us. And then when next year, when it comes time to renew or expand on it, how are we gonna trust the city if they didn't pony up in the first place? In creating a bigger, long-term plan. I like it that we're not taxing people. We're not putting any tax on there.
Right.
We're not asking for people for any more money.
Exactly.
But we are using Trumbull County taxpayers' money to provide residents, eighty to ninety percent, city of Warren residents, to provide them transportation within the city of Warren.
I mean, this was, as Commissioner Lloyd said, this is the vision that we originally had, was that, you know, Trumbull County doesn't go at it alone. We utilize the city of Warren because, um, that's where the majority of the ridership is. I think, in my tentative, you know, non-for, informal conversations with the mayor and with council members, that I think they realize the importance of that. Does that mean that they're gonna, they're gonna vote to, you know, to help in this effort? I'm not sure.
I think if we don't have an agreement on table yet, they will say absolutely yes. They're gonna support it. If we already paid the bill and we're trying to collect money from someone to pay us back. We've all loaned a friend five bucks and you have to give them more. Hey, can you pay me, you know, come and clean your gutters out next week when I have time? And then your grandson never shows up for, you know, all summer and you already paid him to do the job. We all know how that is.
Well, Mike, before we, before this happens, before we enter into this memorandum of understanding, can we have the commitment from the city of Warren before we do this?
I wanna check one thing. I wanna check the date of when January twenty fifth is.
Next, Thursday, Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. So, we can still do this the following week, which will be the thirtieth, thirty first.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we're still okay if we were to.
Let's bank on that. Take it off.
Take it off and hold it.
Take it off and hold it until we.
And let's come up with a memorandum of understanding. So, at that same meeting, if they vote to approve it, they also vote to sign the memorandum of understanding with us. Then you come back to us at a meeting and say, here's the memorandum of understanding from Warren. They're in and we approve it.
Yeah.
And we make the commitment here publicly in this meeting. If Warren does that, we will approve it. My vote will go that way and hopefully yours will too. So, that Warren doesn't say, well, you guys signed first or you pay it first and then we'll pay you back. I don't wanna get in that type of a match. You know, this is something that's gotta be cost shared. I mean, we're talking a hundred fifty grand. Warren clearly has the money to do it. Let's make it happen.
Go that route. Mike, is it okay?
That's fine. I mean.
We gotta be put on their agenda or call them to speak on it, whether it be at the cost or.
I can talk to them, but I've already talked to them about putting the MOU. I'm gonna take basically this MOU here, take out WRTA and put in city of Warren.
But with the right amounts to.
Right, yeah. Just take out changes around a little bit.
And have the prosecutors.
And I can send this over prior to the twenty fifth.
Okay.
To you, yeah.
We need to have that by the twenty fifth, so you know.
Yeah. I can let them know.
Okay.
The one last thing I just wanted to say about this. On this memorandum, you can see there's no dates. It says March twenty twenty four. There's no actual date. The reason for that is, um, there's something called, in transit, we have to do something called a run board. What a run board is, is when the drivers sign for their routes. So, what happens is they have all the routes on the board. The driver comes and says, oh, I wanna do this one, this one, this one, this one. So, the reason there's no dates in here is because once the run board's complete, then it goes out two weeks later. So, the run board's gonna be done sometime in March. We don't have dates. And of course, you don't have dates for twenty twenty five.
So, us not voting on this today doesn't affect their run board bid, doesn't affect their funding, doesn't affect anything. No one's gonna come back and say, well, you guys sat on this and you waited and you screwed it up. We're still good to go on the whole plan as proposed. If we, if we take it up at that meeting.
Correct, because they will put the run board out sometime in February. If we vote on this one way or the other, January thirtieth, we're good. But I think if we go after January thirtieth, then we're in trouble.
Let's double and triple check on that, Mike, okay?
Yeah.
That this is the case, that we're okay.
No, no, I don't.
I don't wanna be hit with.
We're okay till January thirtieth. That I can, because the run board goes out. She, I already know they have the information for the run board. So, as long as they have it, they can pull it at any time before the run board goes up. I just don't have the date of the run board. I can find that date though, when it's about to go up. That we have, that.
I just, Alex, just a note, maybe to help expedite the process, Mike. Just in the MOU that you're for Warren, I think that it's crucial that so we can quickly move fast, that we bake into there. We expect to pay it by a certain date and get the fund number from auditor yoder. So, that way, this is seamless and we're moving it quicker. So, we have the money in hand in our bank before we even go to commit that other half.
Good point.
I think we need to kinda expedite this if we're trying to get this done by March.
Then they would just bill us. If Warren's okay with writing us a check, then they'll just bill us with a monthly.
So, we have the money in the bank and then that way, we can take care of the monthly invoice through Mike. I'm just giving some ideas for process.
Actually, that's not a problem because when I've been talking to Eddie up there, he keeps asking, when do you want the money? When do you want the money? So, as soon as this is passed, we'll get the money fairly quickly. That's not a problem.
From Warren, though.
From Warren.
Yeah. But the more we can provide them upfront, the quicker we can.
Right. And then, like I said, then we will, the invoice will come directly to us to pay on a monthly basis.
And we'll already have money in the bank.
And the money's already gonna be there, yeah. So, I will hold off on this until.
Yes. And this does not, neither of those routes affect Niles or any other municipalities?
No, they're strictly.
Warren routes?
Warren routes, yeah.
Okay. Then we're good there.
At this point.
Just out of curiosity, real quick, was this seventy three, was this the old Warren Express, kind of? Is that what they called the Warren?
Warren Express is still.
Warren Express is still going.
Okay.
This'll give us three rounds.
This is three total. Good, okay.
You're gonna get them from Warren to other parts of Warren.
Right.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. So, um, actually, I think the old numbers, there were old numbers and I've got them here, but, you know.
Oh, I was just curious, just to know how many we're offering.
Yeah, it's just those two. Let's see, uh, seventy three used to be called East. And seventy four was, is still out, but yeah, they just changed what they did.
Good.
Let's not lose sight of the fact that some of those routes, we did have five at one time, but some of those routes were not.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. There are a couple of routes down here that I've got numbers for.
Those two, by far, were the most heavily traveled routes.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, they were definitely the heavy.
It's gonna be a, for a lot of people that depend on that, that'll be back in service in March.
And.
And that's gonna be a big deal too, is we're gonna have to monitor those two buses.
Yes.
To see the ridership, real numbers.
Oh, absolutely.
Not, not the numbers we were getting before.
Right.
Because if we are gonna look at expanding on this program in the future, we need to see results on it now. On these two, this is another kind of a test route type of scenario. But a test route where we have skin in the game and money in the game.
Yep.
Where the last one was funded by ODOT, so we really didn't pay attention much until it was done. But this one here, we can see and we can monitor along the line. And I want quarterly updates, things like that with the board of how many riders are actually on these buses, Elm Road? How many bodies are actually, and how many unique bodies, different bodies?
Well, you're not gonna get different bodies.
Well, I just don't want the math where they're counting it at every bus stop and they're counting that person, you know, their ghost numbers baked into that stuff as far as ridership hours of.
Well, the problem is you're not gonna get the single person. That's what you're trying to find. That, you're never gonna get that. Because, uh, the way fixed routes are done is by when they up, when they walk in. I don't know how WRTA is set up. Some of them actually have a light. If a person walks on the bus, it's counted. Some have a clicker. Different ones have different things. But they don't, you know, so one person could ride the bus twenty times. You're not gonna know that.
But that sounds like twenty riders.
Right. It's not twenty riders.
I know, but it's, when it's told to.
In the math we've been given, that's twenty riders.
Right.
You know, that's the problem.
The only way you could do that is when you're doing something like what we're doing right now with what they call the on-demand. I can figure out.
Well, that's different though.
Right. It's completely different because we know where they are.
It's hard to, and it's hard to quantify if that's the case. Because you could tell me how many rides, but that doesn't necessarily mean the ridership. You know what I mean?
Right.
So.
That's the problem with that part of it. But I can, um, I'm working with the, uh, DHA for WRTA all the time. I can get monthly ridership every month, like I said, to get people. That's the one that we're not gonna get that.
All right. Good job, Mike.
All right. Thanks.
Good job, Commissioner.
First thing.
Putting this plan together.
We're moving forward.
One last thing I wanna say.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. The other thing with this, which you're absolutely right. We have to make sure that the ridership's here. Got a couple complaints regarding us pulling the plug all the time. Not only getting the plug pulled on this, um, it's a caseworker that finds people jobs. They use the Elm Road route for a year and then all of a sudden, they can't use it anymore. So, you know, if we commit to this, we're gonna really kinda need to, we're gonna need to continue this past just one year.
Understand.
Well, we want a long-term, we want a long-term solution for ridership. But then again, you know, we are Trumbull County. We're not New York City. We're not Chicago where people can say, hey, I'm gonna live here and just not own a car and the government's gonna provide for me to get where I wanna go, when I wanna go and how I wanna go. And there's no responsibility on me. We're not getting, this isn't that type of a county where people can live in Cleveland and just plan their future based on public transit. We're a different, unique community. And if they want that, there are other areas for that. But we're not gonna adjust our whole tax base system and, and as we talked about, I'm not in favor of having people outside of the ridership pay for this thing. So that, you know, someone's working a job for a year, two years, three years and rely on this. After working a year, two years, three years at the same job with the same route, they oughta be able to either afford transportation or afford to pay some of their public transportation down the road. So, this is, it's, I look at it as a lift up, not a permanent lifestyle change that we're trying to provide.
Well, we're always gonna try to provide for those that are underserved. And I think Commissioner Lloyd means that. It's just, uh, we always have to weigh the cost with how much service we provide, obviously.
And when we weed out those sorts of people, we weed out, then there are people that are wheels are bound. There are people that will never drive, people that will never be able to afford that.
But we're covering those people.
Well, and that's what I mean. We have to have a blanket for all that. But the bus route, a fifty-five person bus.
Right.
Diesel engine parked out in front, you know, four of them outside with nobody on it. That doesn't cut it for me.
I'm gonna kinda disagree with you a little bit here in the sense that.
You're a transit guy. I get that.
Well, no, not that I'm a transit guy. There's something else. The kids, and I don't know what generation it's called, but the ones that are between twenty and thirty or even younger don't wanna drive.
Gen Z. Yep. Gen Z.
They do not wanna drive. They want public transportation. That's, that's all I'm gonna.
They can want it. Like I said, I hate to say it, but I hate saying it. It sounds cruel with that. I've got people on families that are kinda that way.
Yeah.
You know, but they live in Cleveland. They wanna live big city life. You go to the big cities to do that. If you don't adapt what we have here in Trumbull County in our traditional.
I think, I think what we're doing here with targeted public transportation and, and, um, scaling it down a little bit is a good first step. We see that.
Yeah, those are the good first.
If we see those numbers start to climb exponentially, we can make a change from there. But right now, I think we're being prudent with taxpayer money. We're not rushing to put a tax on. But we're still providing a necessary service, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Number eight. Awarded a contract in the amount of seventy four thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars, twenty-five one hundred for four CDVG qualified households and ninety-three seventy-five for one ARP qualified household. The MJD excavating for the heat and shoot sanitary lateral assistance program for LMI. Households benefiting income qualified owner occupied households. And authorized board of commissioners enter and sign agreement in the, any related documents.
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Commissioners nine, ten, and eleven are all gonna receive the very same explanation. But this is the, for the heat and shoot area in Weathersfield or, um.
It's in Weathersfield, yeah.
It's Weathersfield. The sanitary sewer was constructed. So, this is a lateral connection for low to moderate income households. We have income qualified. There was a bid opening and, um, the lowest and best bid for each household was awarded to the bidders. So, for number eight here, MJD is gonna receive five households. Four from the Community Development Block Grant Funds, uh, one from American Rescue Plan Funds to connect people to the heat and shoot sanitary sewer that was constructed.
So, remain fourteen thousand, twelve thousand, fifty-one thousand, sixty-eight thousand, twenty-five thousand, ninety-three hundred, different ones depending on number of households. These are in with?
Each household is gonna be different based on how far away they are from the street, what kinda soils, what kinda plumbing upgrades need to be done. So, each household has a unique bid, lowest and best bidder between MJD, Pollard, TK, and Express Underground. All qualified bidders. They received the houses that they've put forth the lowest investment. So, and that's divided between Community Development Block Grant Funds and American Rescue Plan Funds. So, I think Pollard has two households, TK has seven households, Express has ten households, and MJD has five households for the total.
And they bid on those in particular? Yeah. Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineering. Commissioners Bill McCosky from our office, who, this is one of the reasons we hired him. He went to each house. He had to tailor the specs to each house, you know, knowing things like, oh, for the plumbing modifications, we need to put a sump pump here. We need to redirect, uh, the flow from a footer drain over here. So, all that's incorporated into each house. And there were twenty-four total of them. The bid book actually had pictures of interior of each house, exterior also. So, that each contractor just bid on each house separately. You open them all up and we come out this way. Now, these ARP funds for that project, the commissioners allocated five hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the heat and shoot project. It was per my request. Of that, I spent four hundred and fifty thousand of it on the mainline contractors. And I was withholding some of it for these connections. And, uh, if you add up the amount that's coming from the ARP, out of that, a hundred and, what was it? A hundred and?
Hundred twenty left.
Yeah, I had a hundred and twenty. I was holding in reserve for this.
Yeah, I had a hundred and twenty. I was holding in reserve for this. We'll subtract back the fifty-some thousand that went toward, uh, these connections, which means that other sixty thousand I can pay to the main contractor because we're not expecting his final bill of a hundred thousand and some that's, we're waiting for the delivery of a generator, and that won't come for another month. So this is also going to reduce that monthly capital charge on everyone this much more. Because this came in at less than I was expecting for the ARP connections. So, uh, it's good to.
Those are gonna pay down the bill that they would've been responsible for?
Yeah, it, it, it's less project debt than, than what I originally anticipated, which will translate into a lower monthly capital charge for residents out here. Cause this all worked out great.
And they'll be notified of that in some way, shape, or form that?
Yes, well, we, well, we issue final capital charge, well, uh, it'll be on the agenda. Uh, the final capital charge for heat and shoot is this much. It's a public hearing. It was estimated to be this much and will show the amount of savings. Cause you know that we've had those other savings out there too when.
Right.
That Dean Rumbaut tied in, you know, he put twenty-seven new connections in there, uh, you know, and that reduced the capital charges. Another, uh, reduction in that capital charge.
They're gonna be extremely happy because I remember the public hearing. I, I think that's the first one I remember where there wasn't one dissenting, uh, individual. All, all those families were, and individuals were very appreciative, so. I'm glad we can help them out even more.
We had a hundred percent support and I remember they applauded us at the end of the, uh.
We don't get that.
Public hearing on that one, yes.
Very nice. Okay, number twelve. Request the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners approve the enterprise loan agreement with Dawn Incorporated. Companies requesting tax incentive seventy-five percent for ten years, renovating existing warehouse space at Fair Avenue. Being office facility and purchase warehouse at twenty-nine sixty-one to renovate and install a new parking lot that connect the two facilities located in parcel, uh, numbers located at twenty-eight sixty-one, twenty-nine sixty-one to Fair Avenue. And we discussed this, we had the hearing earlier, we discussed the length here. I guess when this comes up tomorrow, I don't know that I'll have all the research done that I need, and I don't know if you will.
No.
Or if this is something that may be tabled, or more research, or, or maybe we'll have all the info by then.
Um, and my request to Nick and the City Warren still, I think that, I know technicality, but they, especially when the community votes on something as impactful as, as something like this, they, they wanna vote on the exact numbers, not on the exact numbers.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see more. I mean, what's the value of a parking lot compared to the parking, the value they're paying of a building they're gonna tear down and put a, you know, you know, what's the difference? What's the value? What's seventy-five percent of that off? You know, what's the, what's the discount the schools are actually losing? You know, or the communities losing. I'd, I'd like to see some real numbers, I guess.
But then again. You wanna pull it for now and then, uh, until we get those, I mean, instead of just taping it tomorrow, we can take it off and until we get those questions asked, we can revisit it. There's not a timeline on this, that's what it is.
Uh, Nick Coggins, Planning Commission, um, I, I believe the company would like to get this in place so that they could break ground. Uh, this is part of their capital stack. The longer we wait, the longer it's gonna push their construction timeline back.
But they're also asking for public dollars.
They're, uh, according to Attorney General opinion, this is not public dollars. We're not taking money out of our coffers and giving anything to them. We're just foregoing.
Well, it's impacting public dollars. It's impacting public dollars.
Yeah. So that's, but it's, you know, it's.
I understand, yeah, I understand.
So this, this, I, I think for formatting of your, your agenda, you probably just leave it on, and if you choose to table tomorrow, that's up to you. Um, I believe a lot of the information that you've asked for, I do have. I just, I, and some of it has been provided. It's just been in different pieces. I can get all of that put together probably before the end of the day, um, and provide you what they're actually paying now, what they're foregoing now with their existing abatement, what they would pay additionally, uh, if they built this, and what they would forego should you approve an abatement. Um, I have those numbers.
If you can give me that information by the end of the day, then I'm, I'm okay with leaving it on if, if my questions are satisfied with that in regards to that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then again, I do believe, you know, City Warren approved it. That carries a lot of weight with me that they went through. It was on their agenda. They didn't do it just for fun. They didn't do it cause they were looking for things to throw on their agenda. They actually had work in on this thing and for us to come in and trumpet, um, it, you know, I, I.
I, and I, I just, for, for your knowledge, when this, when these abatements go forward, um, we work with the community to schedule their meeting, and we will schedule the Commissioners' public hearing after that. It will never have a memo to go onto your agenda for approval until they approve it. Um, so, last Wednesday, had they only done the first reading instead of approving, it would not be on your agenda for tomorrow. We would've had a public hearing today. As a public hearing, I would've said, they did the first reading, it's gonna go to the second reading at X date. But, uh, the memo to put it on your agenda for approval will never happen until after a community has approved it. Just as a, for a piece of information or knowledge.
Good, right. Thank you. Number thirteen. So I guess we're gonna leave it on and then we'll see what information we get today.
Absolutely.
Okay. Something's just not sitting right with this whole thing with me. I didn't expect proponents, proponents, this is, you know, it is up for debate and it's a, a lot of responsibility on us for it. And then when they pulled out the letter from the superintendent, that was, that was kind of a shocker a little bit, that we don't wanna go against the school district, you know, the, um, so that, that kinda added another layer of stuff for me.
Well, that's less funding for the school.
Correct.
Essentially, and I, and I think that's what you're saying when you're saying public do, it is, you know, it's.
But they're not losing money from what they're already getting, they're just losing future money that, I mean, is someone else gonna come in there and build something on that property? We're gonna say, well, no one else is buying this property. It's connected to them, you know, so what they do on that property there, it's not like we're losing another business that would've bought the property next door and put a parking lot or built, put a, a job factory that's gonna create forty jobs. And we gave it, uh, to this people. This is already kinda in their backyard type of thing. It's already kinda in their domain. And being that, one crucial piece of information that, that I learned was, there is not a tax abatement on one of the properties that they're talking about, the two parcels. They do have a tax abatement on one of them already for ten years, but the other one, they don't. So, we gave them one online before in the past, why not give them one on the other one that's right next door, it's connected to them? You know, like I said, Microsoft's not gonna come in and say, well, we wanted that property, we would've created all these jobs, but you get, you let them have it and with the tax abatement and we didn't. We didn't know that or we'd have bought it, you know, that's not gonna happen here.
No, that, that.
It's not a raw piece of property out.
Mm-hmm.
In Lordstown that, that we're looking for a major player Fortune five hundred company to relocate to. So we're trying to attract them here and offer them incentive to move their business here. This business is in existence here already. There, there's a lot of factors with this thing. So, yeah, table till tomorrow, we'll deal with it tomorrow. Thirteen. Request the appointment of three Trumbull County residents as members of the Trumbull County Tax Incentive Review Council for the term of February one, twenty-four to January thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, in compliance with ORC fifty-seven oh nine point eight five eight two. Recommendation of the Trumbull County Planning Commission, and last year the Commissioners appointed themselves as the representatives. What does this review council do?
This is the, sorry, Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. The Tax Incentive Review Council is an annual council that we, uh, hold every year. Uh, Auditor Yoder or her representative is, uh, is the chairperson of it. Um, and as the administrator of our tax abatements, we help put together reporting. So we have to put together a report that's sent to the state and make sure anybody receiving tax incentives is in compliance with their agreement. They've invested the number of dollars that they've claimed to, they've created the number of jobs that they've claimed to, and they're paying those people the amount of money that they're claiming to. So, uh, there's an annual report that we, we, we get from all the businesses with some backup documentation so that we can verify their claims. Um, put together the report, the Tax Incentive Review Council will re, review it. They must vote on whether to, um, amend, continue, uh, expire, or remove each individual company from, uh, their tax incentive agreement. Uh, once that's done, it is then sent to the Commissioners for the Commissioners to accept the results of the Tax Incentive Review Council. I put on here as a note, uh, in the past, well, the, the past two or three years now, the Commissioners have appointed themselves the review council and then received the agenda from the review council and approved that at the regular meeting minutes. Um, prior to, three years ago, um, the Commissioners appointed members of the Planning Commission who were Trumbull County residents, uh, to sit in, in those three seats. Per revised code, it doesn't matter who sits on there, as long as they're Trumbull County residents that are able to attend this meeting and can review all of the information provided for each abatement. But the Commissioners are responsible for appointing three members to sit on that review council.
This specifically says that all three Commissioners will be appointed?
This does not say all three Commissioners are appointed. I just put a note on there, in, in the past three years, the Commissioners have appointed themselves as the representatives.
Great, so last year, you had a meeting in March at some time, the three Commissioners were there. Did all three Commissioners attend?
I believe only one of you attended.
And the year ago.
The year before that, two Commissioners attended. Um, the year before that, all three did.
So.
I mean, it's completely up to the board. I, I, I don't have a problem. It's once a year.
Correct.
Review these things, I mean.
Once a year.
Um, I don't have a problem sitting on it. I think it's fine.
Yeah.
Gives us insight into the enterprise loan program and all our tax incentives and, uh, what we got out there, what we, what, what's, what's in compliance, what's not in compliance. Um, typically, everything is in compliance, I mean, for the most part, um.
Well, I would say, yes, let's do all three of us again.
Mm-hmm.
And that's literally like five or six days before an election, we'll see who actually shows up to do their job on March fourteenth. And that would be a, a big point there on March fourteenth. We are the tax commission. And it's, we're making it our duties to be at this meeting and circle that date on the calendar and see if we, all three of us show.
Good with it.
Yeah. Number fourteen. Awarded the only bid submitted by APO Horror Company for the TRU TH twenty-two two-two B Housel Craft Road Bridge Replacement Project located in Farmington Township in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Steven Gergre, Trumbull County Engineers, just self-explanatory out. If you have any questions, um, the bid amount to the engineer's estimate is about nineteen percent or something, but their higher revised code changed October of, uh, the twentieth. That's why we're asking you to order the bid. And that's why there was only one bid we. You know, an expensive project.
How do we, how did we estimate it? It's just about four hundred thousand. They estimated seventy-five thousand more and only got one bid.
I, I don't do the estimating, but that's what.
And they know that before they do the bid of what the engineer's estimating it's gonna be?
Yes.
Yeah, makes sense, huh? Fifteen. Concur with Trumbull County Engineers Department authorized the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to advertise for bids for the TRU Trumbull Avenue West Liberty Street Resurfacing Project. Uh, it's partially funded by eighty percent block grant obtained through East Gate. And it's resurfacing of Trumbull Avenue between City Gerard and Belmont Avenue in Liberty, West Liberty Street, between Salt Springs and Marshall Road in Weathersfield Township. No general funds required.
Uh, we're just asking you to, uh, put this up for bid for these, the bidding of these two projects. Eighty percent is funded by the, um, STVG grant. The remaining twenty percent will be funded by the Engineer's Office. Each year, the, um, this will be, uh, um, assuming that you approve it tomorrow, there'll be open one, two, or thirteen.
Good. Sixteen. Concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the whiteaway permits requested of the following companies, Millieon Paving, Dominion East Ohio Permit One and Two. Seventeen. Special manor supplier fleet permit for Kinter Trucking. Eighteen. Special hauling permit to haul steel coils to Jero Transportation, Permit One and Two. Trumbull County Engineers Special Hauling Permit to move overweight equipment over Trumbull County roadways, Southern Pines Trucking. And any questions on any of those?
If you have a question, that is truly my answer.
Those are all self-explanatory. Twenty. To receive the petition signed by owners of lots and land situated on Sheridan Drive, located in Vianna Township. Requesting Trumbull County to provide for construction and maintenance of sanitary sewer lines to serve said lots and lands. And in reference to petitions, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer for his review and recommendations. And preliminary calculations show seventy-two percent of the people that would benefit, uh, have signed the petition already.
Alright, uh, Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer. Commissioners, this has to do with that, uh, sewer line that we are running up to the Baker Elementary School as part of that ARP project. Uh, I asked the trust, the Vianna trustees to gather petitions of the properties between one ninety-three and the school to get them off board with the project, and they got those signatures, and we got a hundred percent of those. But across the street from the school and the six hundred feet down, down the road, we had another property sign that petition. So that's why we're at the seventy-two percent. And I, and my application was only to run that sewer up to the school.
Mm-hmm.
And not, not put it past the school and pick up a couple more houses. So I'm sorta, uh, that's why petition had those other houses on it, and that's why it came to seventy-two percent. But we do not have to build the entire length. Uh, but it'd be nice. See, these people are gonna get sewer this close and now we're gonna stop six hundred feet.
Right.
Sure, they're getting those two.
As far as people want it.
Well, the application only took it to the school.
That application, by the way, though, is, is still with the attorney.
Okay.
It's been submitted, you know?
Yeah, I, I saw where you submitted. I'm glad you submitted it for us, and I think we were number three on the list when you sent it. Thank you for that.
Altogether, we have, I don't know how many, I'll have to look at my thing when we get to that, but you're there. And what we did was we, I wanted to do those three because they were very similar in nature, and I thought that might expedite things a little bit.
Okay.
That's why I asked for the three that we asked for. But we still have more that we still wanna have decisions on. So, yes, they're the most recent three that we've sent in, but we have a few ahead of them that we still are waiting on.
Okay, alright.
We had a trial, and so that has the way through.
Okay, and Commissioners, I'll look at this when we're in the design phase of it, which will be coming up shortly. Uh, I'll see if there's a way we can stretch it down and pick up those other two houses too. But I mean, that's an extra six hundred feet of sewer and just off the top of my head. Hundred bucks a foot, you're looking at extra sixty thousand to pick up these two houses.
Will we change the grant application for that?
No, that's when we probably have to request that we make a modification to the grant application.
I mean, I'm fine with it.
Well, let me see if I can afford it with the money that we have to pick up these other two. Cause it would be a shame. Everybody else on Sheridan Drive, but then there's this big gap and we got these other two people, and they're not gonna get it. I'm sure they're, they're.
Right. We wanna provide as much water and sewer service.
Alright.
For residents of County and especially in the townships as we can. Matter of fact, I'm gonna harness you, Gary, I'm gonna point you toward Mecca and take the leash off you. And let you go.
Alright.
Cause right now you are a sewer and water line building machine. Well, no, no, he's gonna go through Vazada. He's gonna go through Vazada to Mecca. Like Sherman Woods in Georgia.
They're waiting for my water.
Okay, alright.
Keep that passion going, Gary.
Alright.
We'll find the dollars. You just keep digging up dirt.
Okay, alright.
I've been in contact with Superintendent McQuaid too, and he's extremely excited, uh, obviously with potential for that. And, and obviously with the new school complex of all the schools going in there, and that's the future plans, just falls in line with it. We thank the Commissioners. So, not only are we getting, you know, public health and safety to those people that live on that road, but the bigger picture is that school, the school and the campus that's gonna be there and, uh, they won't have to worry about it in the future, and it's gonna be a long-lasting improvement for that.
And, and this even ties into the airbase.
Yes, absolutely.
Being able to relocate that high school to this property now.
Yes, it helps with the, with the, uh, yours, um, study. It's, you know.
Joint land use.
Joint land use study, thank you. Uh, but, but because that school was in somewhat a violation for that. So, getting, getting out of that old school, getting into the new school not only helps with, you know, obviously the new digs, but, but getting, getting, uh, more in, in line with the joint land use study is big.
I don't think Gary sleeps tonight. I think they just. I don't think Gary sleeps tonight. I think they just bring him back to the lab and plug him in and right re-charges up for the next day.
That's what it feels like sometimes.
Robo-engineer. Okay, number twenty-one. Authorized Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign an Ohio Small Community Environmental Infrastructure Group Water and Wastewater Project Proposal between United States Army Corps of Engineers and Trumbull County Board of Commissioners for designing and construction assistance for the Bezetta and Mecca wastewater treatment plants nutrient reduction improvement project. Number eight S twenty, located in Bezetta and Mecca Townships respectively, this action for recommendation of sanitary engineers.
Uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Commissioners, uh, I think you're both aware of where these plants are. The Bezetta plant at the end of Sterling Drive, uh, just south of the Lake Shore neighborhood, well, yeah, just north of the park, south of the Lake, uh, Lake Shore neighborhood. And Mecca up there, just north of the Portland city limits. We have a package plant up there also. Um, the Corps of Engineers has, uh, basically are forcing us to reduce our phosphorus discharge from these two plants. And saying that it causes algal blooms inside the lake. Um, and I know that's another incentive, another, uh, mission of this, uh...
Invasive species.
Yeah, the city of Portland and the invasive species and all, and all that sort of thing to reduce this phosphorus load. The reason they picked on us was because we are a, a clear pipe going into that lake with these two plants. But anyway, it's going to cost over a million dollars to make these upgrades that are planned to make that happen. And, um, so...
And this is part of our MOU and the, the Corps signing off on a permit we did last year, twenty-five or fifty-year permit, that we worried that they would shut down those plants, and they said, okay, as long as you maintain the phosphorus, the nitrogen, there's no way to monitor for it yet. So they, their standards were unachievable anywhere.
Right.
So this is partially in agreement with that, or partially in response to, to our agreement to reduce the phosphorus load?
Yes.
And agreement to get that permit signed to keep these things...
Well, this is to try to get them to pay for it. We're trying to get that seventy-five percent grant to pay for this. And, uh, so Scott Werner, he's gonna, uh, take his, take a shot at doing a grant application here. He's gonna write this. He has a majority of it done now, and we just need you to sign it, to send it in. We're gonna try to, to find, you know, get the Corps itself to pay for this.
Good. And we'll take the keys there and start and keep you in that neighborhood.
We're gonna...
Finish up to the fairgrounds and north.
Okay.
That's right. Twenty-two. To enter into an amended agreement, buy-in between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners of Trumbull County and the Braceville Community Foundation, as approved by Baker, Dubois, Beck, Wiley, and Matthews ARPA Council for the foundation, African-American Historical Building Acquisition and Renovation and Preserve, Unique African-American History in Braceville, as fully described in Exhibit A. And the BTCC allocated the sum of two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to the foundation. Amendment is necessary to correct the language of the agreement previously authorized by the Board on October fourth, twenty twenty-three. Okay, we agree to this? They already have the check. What happened here?
Mr. Masaki, would you like to explain?
Sure. Yeah, when the agreement came from our ARPA Council, had some extraneous language. I drafted in from an old agreement.
Okay.
We didn't pick it up till after it was already signed. We have to get it, get an amendment.
Yeah, so we're just clearing up the language in there and...
Yeah, it was, it was just someone used a, uh...
Prior.
A prior agreement as a template and left some language in there that applied to the, I will say, the attorney used a prior agreement.
Right.
And, uh, applied the prior agreement language specific to that person or that agency.
And she's okay. She's, she rewrote it and it's done right.
Yeah, it's done, yeah.
Correctly, okay.
So it's just getting that language fixed, so we're doing it.
Gotcha. Yeah, no way in the world am I going back to one and her husband and saying, we need that check back. That's not happening.
No, they know that. I think, didn't they bring it to our intention?
Yes.
Yeah, and so keep them in your prayers, by the way. They've had a family tragedy.
Yes, absolutely. Um, twenty-three. Adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to our mitigation of public health emergency, American Rescue Plans Act funds, Auto Department of Development Brownfield remediation programs. And this here is...
The land bank.
Trumbull County Land Bank. And it is two million dollars in addition to what we already allocated towards them, um, from the ARPA funds. And this is what we discussed when Mr. Miller was here, um, so that they can apply and get, turn that two million, I believe, into eight million in grant money by utilizing our two million as, as match.
Correct. And it's up to two million, and, um, within the agreement itself, um, there is the provisions that we discussed as far as, um, the quarterly invoicing, um, so that you guys can get the money as you need it and, and it, and the cash. That's not within the, the resolution. It's within the agreement itself, which is the second part of this, but the attached agreement. We made sure that that, I wasn't sure about the language on it. We wanted to make sure that that language was included to be able, for you guys to be able to invoice. And with the quarterly, you guys had actually initially asked, I think, monthly, Matt had.
So we're committing the two million so they can get the grant money.
Up to two million, yeah.
But we're not giving them a check for two million until they need it, as they bill it.
Correct, correct. So we'll be invoiced quarterly as, as things go, and there's provisions for, uh, returning of money if, um, it's not utilized.
Um, will you...
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure something out for that. I'll get that taken care of. But he, um, Mr. Masaki had to, to make a few changes to the agreement in order to make it correspond with what we had talked about in our meetings here. So, um, we'll have, he's going to have that. You have that for Lisa now or for the Commissioners?
I sent it by email.
Okay, so Lisa has that, and then I'll, I'll get with Christie, and we'll figure out how we wanna do the, uh, how we wanna submit the invoices. Pretty much, we could do it very similar to, um, we're getting to the next part, which was the, the wean building. Where what he did, what Mr. Martin did was he sent me an invoice itemized. We kind of went back and forth a little bit of that with that, but, but ultimately, as long as we have an invoice for, you know, what we're paying and itemized, and then backup documentation, I'm fine with, with what we did with that. I was, you know, that worked out. We, and we, and I just had, like, Christie review it, and I reviewed it, and, um, so that, to make sure it was really clear. The, the big problem or the big issue that we had was the administrative costs not being completely clear. But once we clarified that, and it was fine.
Yeah, that was Martha Yoder, Auditor, and Trumbull County Land Bank. Yeah, yeah. Clarifying that for the record. Okay, and, uh, that is gonna approximately be able to, um, remediate demolition of eight two hundred abandoned residences and commercial properties. And as we discussed, when we approve this, a huge majority of these are outside the city limits of Warren. There are some Warren addresses. We clarified on that. Some might be Champion, some might be Warren Township and, and other areas. Howland, that these weren't, although they had a Warren address, and it looked like there were a bunch of Warren addresses. They were actually in the townships.
Right.
So we felt we could support this out of our county ARPA and not be, uh, doing Warren's job.
Yeah, and the county doesn't pay for any of the...
Okay, perfect. Okay, number twenty-five. Um, well, twenty-four is the agreement that goes along with it. Twenty-five is adopt the resolution authorizing expenditure from ARPA funds for the wean demolition. And this is something we approved already. We approved up to two million. The bill is coming in at two hundred and sixteen thousand, five fifty-three and ten cents.
Right.
And so we are, uh, approving the ARPA resolution for that exact amount. And the, what we approved initially, those funds will be reutilized, re, and they've, they've been repurposed or back into the pot, and we're taking two million out of the pot to do the other program.
So basically, what, what we've committed, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Land, or Trumbull County Land, God, Trumbull County Auditor. I'm tired, and I haven't eaten my protein yet this morning. Um, so what we initially had a pro, allocated. Now, this was done just a bit differently than we've done the other ones. They, you, there was a promise made of the two million, and that was set aside, and that was for the wean building, up to two million. It costs, our, our match ended up being two sixteen. I have that invoice from, uh, Mr. Martin, so that it, it, it outlined exactly what was paid for. We looked at it. It has all the back, background document, uh, backup documentation. Um, there was no, never a resolution like this done for that.
Right.
Just to clarify, because that was, um, just a little bit different, and I, it was before my time, but I know it was a little bit different. We wanted to do the resolution on the other one so that we're consistent with how we're doing it for everybody, right? Um, so this is a resolution for that money, just for the wean building, and it is, um, the tw, our twenty-five percent share of the whole cost of the wean building. And as you said, and I've, I had already, once I had this cost, I had already noted that on, that as a cost on this. Um, so you won't see, there's some changes, but you won't see any changes on what I report today based on this yet. Like I said, just a little bit different because we already had it on the allocated sheet. But, um, but this is just kind of, uh, formalizing and so that we can pay them.
Okay. And then, of course, twenty-six goes along with that.
Mm-hmm. No, I have that invoice, and I'll make sure that Shara has it. So once this is passed tomorrow and everybody's signed off on the agreement, she can just release the fund. I'll make sure she has that. No, we don't need a separate one. It's, it's perfectly, it's fine.
Okay, same two people as before. Twenty-six.
Sorry.
Uh, yeah, twenty-six goes along with it. Twenty-seven. Approve the agreement for legal services buying between Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office and Howland Township Board of Trustees. Authorizing the Prosecutor's Office Service Law Director for Howland Township for the term January one twenty-four to December thirty-first twenty-four. Prosecutor's Office shall be paid the sum of forty-two thousand dollars annually for said services and thirty-five hundred a month. Can be terminated by either party on thirty days' notice. Hey, Commissioner, a question I got on this. Why, why do we allow, because we've had some instances in the last year where we tried to, um, we had an opinion, we couldn't get it, because prosecutors said, wait, I, I represent Howland and you, so you gotta go outside a house, which costs us money.
Not to, not to mention the annexation.
Right, do the annexation and stuff, and, and we've got some other things potentially coming up down the road that, you know, why do we allow this to happen? Is the cost of what we pay to get things because there's a conflict with Howland more than what we're receiving from the city of Howland?
I've had that same question.
How taxing is it on the taxpayers because Howland is, is covered, and it makes us use taxpayer dollars to go outside counsel when we already have counsel?
I've had that same question because inevitably, uh, when we have, and that, not just Howland, but a lot of different communities that, that the Prosecutor's Office does this with. I mean, it causes conflicts to where it's gonna incur costs on the county because we have to hire our own attorneys. So, um, we've seen it with the annexation. We've seen it on a lot of different issues where the Prosecutor's Office is conflicted. So, I, I gotta really stand to question this, especially, as you mentioned, if the amount that, that we're getting paid is actually, you know, we're actually losing money on this because, yes, we're getting paid forty-two thousand dollars, but when you talk about how, we have to go out for outside counsel for different things, how much are we paying for that? So...
Right.
And how many, seems like Howland Township, and I brought this up in the past, it seems like Howland Township is one of the, I mean, is the largest township in the county. So inevitably, there's gonna be issues, you know, that we deal with with Howland Township. Is, is that really the best course of action to have, uh, a Prosecutor's Office represent Howland Township for that amount?
I mean, would if Champion did it too? Would if Warren Township did it too? Would if Lawrence Town did it too?
Right.
Champion does use the Prosecutor's Office.
Oh, Champion does also?
But it seems that this creates a lot of, as I mentioned, conflicts for the county. Yes, we're getting paid, but if we look at all the different entities Prosecutor's Offices representing, and then having to say to us, sorry, you have to get outside counsel. We're conflicted.
Well, and, 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 let me use an example here. With the road dedication in Champion, if Champion does use their prosecutor, is that why we had to go get other counsel? And the proc, and the engineer got other counsel? Is our prosecutor couldn't represent us?
Well, that, well, that and the engineer's office and us, you can't represent two different clients with two different...
Right.
They, they represent, that too. That is another conflict. But the other conflict was two elected official, two sets of elected officials, um, with different opinions.
Had Champion not used our, our Prosecutor's Office, or our Prosecutor's Office had, would they have represented us?
Probably not. No, because there was another conflict.
Okay.
With the engineer.
With the engineer's office.
But I do wanna note for the record, it is for Ohio Revised Code. Um, you might wanna look into Section three oh nine point oh nine where it states that the county prosecutor is the legal entity for the township. That might be why. I'm not saying I agree with it. I actually don't agree with it, but...
Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor. That's usually the case, but I think Howland...
Unless they have a legal advisor.
I think, I think, though, that the reason that, and, but other townships don't have contracts like this. I think that Howland has it because, and, and I could be wrong, but I think that they're a home role. So I think that because they're home role, is that correct?
You could, yeah, I didn't think of that. They are home role.
Yeah, Howland and Liberty are both...
Okay, so Howland and Liberty would have to have their own legal counsel because they are home role. They're not, they don't...
So they're the only two who are exempt from...
Right, they have, I think that's why you have a contract. Because I know when I was Farmington Township Trustee, we automatically went to the Prosecutor's Office rather than have our own legal counsel. And it was because of that, because the Ohio Revised Code. We did not have to pay for that because it was a statutory duty. Just like, just like my statutory duty is to do the license collection, and I can't charge the dog pound for that. It's that kind of situation.
But it does incur a lot of costs for...
Yeah, and I mean, if, if you're going to have some townships that you're gonna have conflicts with where it is a statutory thing, but I don't think it is for home role camp, home role township. I think that's why you have a contract here. Could be wrong, but...
Mr. Lamarcus.
Sam Lamarcus, Trumbull County Treasurer, just to add whatever you want to...
Approach a little bit to the microphone and get you.
Uh, Sam Lamarcus, Trumbull County Treasurer, just to add a little bit as to what has been said. And I only know this because I happen to be in Columbus when it was occurring about nine years ago. There was a legislator that tried to address the revised code that the prosecutor is charged with representing the townships as Auditor Yoder has stated, but they can't step out of lawsuits because of conflicting. And the address of that code, never seen the light of day, by the way. I mean, they tried like heck for three months to address it. And if, if you wanna look back, I, I believe it was February, it would be February nine years ago, there was more arguing taking place with the legislature body at that period of time than has ever happened in the history of Ohio. And it ended up being shelved, and it never happened. It's, it's a unique situation. I commend the Commissioners for the frustration you have with it because it was addressed in the past unsuccessfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Um, I wish, once again, I don't, I don't know if we've got a prosecutor to any of our workshop things. If something like this, I'd like to have a prosecutor here to defend why they do the contract, what their thoughts are. At least before I vote on this, I'd, I'd like to hear from, I don't know if Mr. Danzo's back yet. I know he's been on, on sick leave. Um, I mean, we could talk to Mr. Toast or, or somebody, but, I mean, I, I don't wanna just rubber stamp this because they did it in the past every year. Um, I'd like to look into this a little further.
You can remove it.
Because if it does hurt us in any way, shape, or form, or...
I'd like to see the numbers that we pay out, the legal counsel because of these conflicts.
You know, plus, of course, it says here that started January first, which was fifteen days ago, so we're gonna get some flack on that, of course. So, um...
That doesn't, honestly, it doesn't matter.
I understand that. It does, they say that half tongue in cheek, but, but it's prosecutor's own contract with somebody. So I'd like to see how the prosecutor reacts to that and see what their, what their ruling is on why they would do that. With as much mortgage we've given the Prosecutor's Office over the last two years, the last thing they need probably is to have to deal with Howland.
Well, that's the thing is, we're, we're asking if they have any exorbitant, most, more opinions according to them than they've ever had.
Right, and we're waiting for opinions.
Right.
For two weeks now.
Why are we?
That aren't done, why are they dealing with Howland?
I, I agree with you. I've agreed from the, I, I've always had that question.
Any other thoughts and? Not picking on Howland. They can find great service. Forty-two grand will get them great service with other, other people, but this is, if it creates a burden on the rest of the county and the rest of the issues. They say they're overworked downstairs. I've heard that a million times, that they're overworked with things. So, this is something we could, we could possibly do to their favor by taking that off of their plate. And we're the ones, it sounds like, to do the contract that make them deal with Howland.
If it's possible, I, I would like to not do that because I, I know not only the resources that we spend going out looking for outside counsel when there's a conflict, but the time, getting everybody up to speed. I mean, it's just, it would be so much more seamless if we didn't have this.
Right, and I believe there is a COG meeting tonight and a COG reorganization meeting tonight, which Howland Township will be participating in. Maybe we can talk to one of the trustees and get their opinion and, and their take. Or, or call Darlene and say, why do, why do you do this? Is, do you really wanna do this? Is this something we just do and that's why we redo it? Could you find counsel elsewhere? And then, again, hear from our Prosecutor's Office too. I'd like to.
Yes, let's, let's hold off.
That's why we have these workshops before we vote.
Yeah.
So, we don't discuss it tomorrow and beat it up. We can beat it up today and do the research and decide, um, if it's what's best and what's not.
Agreed.
And if we get the answers we want, then someone can make a motion, someone can second it without any discussion because we already did the discussion.
So, it's staying on?
Leave it on for right now. And I will, when this meeting's done, reach out to a trustee, if you, if you allow me to do that.
Yep.
And reach out to Prosecutor's Office too. I'll go down there when this is done and say, hey, why do we do this and do we have to do this? And would this free you up if we didn't do this?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Ewing Cross from Portage County. Um, I just wanna put this in, the townships can get their own counsel, so they don't have to, although by state law, the prosecutor is their acting counsel.
Correct.
But I know there are some townships in Portage County that do hire their own.
Oh, we have many of them here.
So, there's, it's a possibility and, and I see the conflict all the time. I get it. I just wanted to, I wasn't sure you knew, it hadn't come up in the discussion so far today. But they can hire their own counsel that is not from, just for the record.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, that's exactly correct. And for specialized things, we did that as a, as a trustee. If there was a certain situation that, and usually in consultation with the, the Prosecutor's Office, they would say, you know, you probably should hire somebody else for this. And, and I, I know that, um, things like if, if there's title issues with, with land owned by the township, they, they usually recommend, you know, a title counsel or a real estate attorney, somebody like that, instead of their office. Also, just if Mr. Danzo is out, Mr. Toast does a lot of the work with the townships anyway. He was the one I dealt with mostly.
Then I'll, hunt him down, this is on, see what they think. But I do know, yeah, a lot of our townships are represented and in fact, there's one attorney that, I just had to deal with Attorney Finlemore last week and got a nasty gram because he called me to tell me that Hubbard did not approve the road annexation or the road, uh, vacation.
Right.
Um, so it was not on her plate anymore. And I got grief from another Commissioner for talking to that representative when all he was doing was, she misheard a conversation and ran to the prosecutor that I was wrong and bad and stuff. But I cleared up to the prosecutor that.
Misheard an eavesdrop.
All, all I was doing was receiving information on behalf of the township so we can not vote on that issue. Okay, so we will look at this and again, this may be something we may have the table. Or may, I don't, I would say not remove it at this point. Um, unless you wanna remove it pending it, it's up to you.
I feel until we have the information, it's probably best to remove it.
Okay.
It's not like it's time, I mean, it's already January, so.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's remove it.
A one week isn't gonna make a difference.
Right.
And it's less to.
Unless they get a legal question, they're gonna call prosecutor today and all the prosecutors, I don't work for you yet.
According to the rest of the.
Didn't work for him on January first either.
Yeah.
But just so, yeah.
Okay.
I think you should.
No reflection at all on Howland Township with this, we're just, you know, we.
We're just worried about getting our, our questions answered in a timely manner and seeing what we spend on outside counsel.
Correct. Hey, I just wanted an answer of why.
Yeah.
That's all. Okay, number twenty-eight. Request that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners approve the use of monies acquired by TAG Drug Force placed toward the purchase of two used vehicles. The monies were acquired due to ending a lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management. As a result, terminating lease agreements, the two vehicles were sold at auction resulting in proceeds of thirty thousand five oh one due TAGs in the sale of said vehicles. Using the proceeds in the sale as well as trading in three old vehicles that are no longer viable, TAG would have the ability to purchase two used vehicles. In order for this purchase agreement to proceed, TAG has requested the Commissioners approve the use of the monies earned in equity of thirty thousand five oh one forty-two and an additional, and add, and an additional forty-seven sixty-seven fifty-eight. They received a quote from a local dealer for two vehicles and then the, the ones that they are trading in.
Mike Nuthy, Sheriff's Office, Commander Tag Drug Task Force. Uh, we were in a lease agreement with Enterprise for several years. Uh, the cost of the leases had increased, uh, which was always being paid by grant money, uh, just not affordable anymore. Because of the car market, just by turning those two vehicles in, we were able to generate thirty thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, we wanna use that, trade in a couple older cars that, that aren't usable anymore and request the forty-seven hundred dollars from the Board of Commissioners to, so basically, we'll be getting, uh, two used cars with low miles dependable for less than five thousand dollars.
And this is money that you brought in how?
Just by turning in the leased vehicles. So, the, the leased vehicles, when they, when you turn those back.
We had that lease program.
Yes, they go to auction and that's the equity, however, they, I'm sure they keep some of it as well, but they sent us a check for thirty thousand five hundred dollars, which, uh, Shara has right now.
At one time, the lease program was very beneficial to the county when vehicle prices were, um, much more, much more, uh, in line.
Yes, and not a lease.
Since COVID, but.
We look, we looked at, and I, I brought it in front of the board a couple times, where we were trying to get into new lease agreements before the prices, uh, got too high. The problem was the, the lease windows would close prior to us being able to do everything approved, uh, through the board. And then by the time I go back to them and say, hey, we're ready to do this, uh, sorry, the window closed, so we weren't able to do it. But they're open-ended leases, so we just got to keep the cars that we had been using for, you know, three or four years or whatever it was.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, so the funds you're requesting are the forty-seven sixty-seven fifty-eight, but you don't have a fund number. Um, and it probably should be in the resol, in the resolution. Um, I'll work with Christie and get that for you.
Thank you.
And get it to Lisa.
Thank you very much.
This might need tweaks a little more.
Okay.
Because I, I got it so late.
It was last minute, well.
Yeah, it is a little bit, like, yeah.
Well, the problem, again, the problem, sorry for rushing it, but, you know, we're dealing with, with these used vehicles. They're sitting on the law. We have an agreement, if we push this back another week, both of these vehicles could be gone and I could be standing here, you know, again in a couple weeks doing the same thing.
And, and we're, probably it will be from nine twenty, which is sales tax for, um, Justice, right? But we're trying not to do direct ones from that. We're trying to do transfers from that to the general fund and then to that. But we may have to go ahead and just do it this way. But we're gonna, we wanna try to start doing that a little bit more. So, we, we'll work with you on it, but for this one, we'll, we'll figure it out.
And I appreciate that. And so, you know, Shara has the check.
Right.
That we received from Enterprise.
Okay.
So, that's the repossession money and I'll.
Great, and we'll, and I'll, um, I'll, I'll talk to Christie about how we can figure this out and board it.
If you have any other questions, feel free to call.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm definitely agreeing with you, yes, support them with whatever they need, but do we need prosecutor approval or anything else on this that's gonna throw up any bells, whistles, flags?
If I may ask, we purchased a car a few months back and we went through this and, and based on, um, the purchase being of used vehicles and less than seventy-five thousand dollars, there, there was no need to go to competitive bid. Uh, that's what I learned last time, assuming all is still true, uh, we, we should be good.
We're actually under the old fifty as well on this one.
Correct.
When you add, uh, sorry, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, uh, when you add the cost of the two vehicles together, we're still under the old fifty. The other thing is the actual cost to the county is way below that. It's under four, five thousand.
Four thousand.
Right, right, so I.
If I need to take any additional steps to make this happen, I'll, I'll do something.
Have we gotten more than one quote?
No, the, the reason I, the reason it makes it difficult to do that in a situation when we're buying new cars.
With used cars, yeah.
Because if I go, if I go get something from Diane's Tower or wherever else, the ones that we have here will be gone. We'll just keep chasing our tails up if we like if we do that.
And, and as I said, it's under, not only under seventy-five, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, it's under the, it's under the old fifty.
Yes.
So, it's, it's two vehicles that are under that fifty, I.
Yep, uh, I got one question for you, Mike, if I could. In the line of work that you're in, I imagine you need to flip cars occasionally because eventually people are gonna realize, oh, that, they drive this, they drive that.
Yeah.
So, the lease program is pretty good because you're, you're flipping, you're moving cars. Your guys, they're not saying, drug dealers aren't saying, oh, here comes that car, here comes Tag Task Force.
They pay attention to that, you're right. Uh, and the lease program is good for that reason. The problem is price of leasing right now is so out of control that the grant monies that we receive to help us operate, that's where the lease payments have been coming from. So, now, if we can do this, I'm not taking anything out of our grant monies that we're receiving. That can all be used for operational costs and we won't have, basically, all of our veh, vehicles be our own. In a couple of years, yeah, we'll probably have to do that. Matter of fact, one of these vehicles, one of the cars at my place will be transferred to the investigators at the Sheriff's Office and I'll replace that vehicle at my, at my office now with one of these because that car's been around a long time.
Do you ever trade cars off with other counties or anything?
No, I don't know how that would work with the inventory, the, the way we do things. I'm, I'm not, I'm not certain that would work. We have taken some vehicles, we gave, we just gave a truck to the, uh, engineer's office no longer that we weren't using. They were gonna be able to utilize it, so we switched that over and let them have that. I would, I've thought about Billy with these cars that we're trading in. I don't know that it's worth holding off of these.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Martha, if you can clean up the language on it, put the fund numbers and stuff in there, it should be.
I'll get the fund numbers, I'm gonna let Lisa go with it. If she needs help, I'll help her.
Thanks.
Okay, that concludes everything for the regular agenda. One item we do need to talk about because I would like for it to be added if we can, if by now, this afternoon or whatever, and that's the Hydrola issue. We brought it up a few weeks ago, the language is not correct. We ran it by prosecutor, of course, he's been out sick, but apparently working remotely or something because he's returning emails and stuff. And we gotta figure out what the status is on his opinion of the hundred thousand dollars for us to kick in into the Hydrola fund to make sure that when March and April come, they can start the treatment of the lake. Uh, three hundred acres needs to be treated. Right now, the cost is three hundred and fifty thousand-ish dollars. And if we don't do it now, um, as we saw at Pima Tuning, they left undertreated like seventy acres, not seventy acres, turned in like six hundred or more, I think it was, the next year, which, you know, quadrupled the cost of what they had to do the following year. Um, there we go. The man of the hour. Bring you right up to the, right up to the point. Hydrola, Mr. Danzo, we're talking about Hydrola. Um, pro, uh, opinion on the Hydrola, us contributing a hundred thousand dollars to, for Hydrola. Have you been able to work on that yet so we can put that on the agenda?
Have you guys, have you guys done any preliminary work on it or not?
Where, where we've been is we, there was draft language that was pulled off the agenda pending, uh, your review. You had asked for additional information and the mayor from the city of Cortland provided that for you, I believe, last week. And we're waiting on that language to be placed on the agenda.
Okay, there is no language. Let's put that, there, there's language that you guys came up with somewhere, okay? There is no plan. There is no communication with ODNR or, that I'm aware of, or the Army Corps of Engineers that I'm aware of that says how this is going to be structured, how it's going to work. There is no information that's been given to me as to where the authority is for the county to contract with this company to perform work in a lake that the county doesn't control. This was given to us, actually, not even given to us, it was put on the agenda. Happened to come up to the attention of our office for three hundred thousand dollars. And we said, hey, some more work needs to be done here. The only thing that I've got from the city of Cortland is, here's a contract with AquaDoc that allows AquaDoc under the state purchasing program to do it. There's a lot of background work that needs to be explored here that I haven't been made aware of at all.
Now, you must, you must be out of the loop because we've had multiple meetings. We had presentations from the state, we have a proposal.
There is, that, that is the problem, is that nobody has brought me into the loop, other than to say, where's the language? That's not the way that we work with this stuff. We need the information from you guys if there's going to be something that we are gonna review legally.
The best we can.
Well, didn't, didn't the mayor of Cortland go down there and?
Yeah, we had the meeting here and she was gonna provide it all here.
What I hear, uh, the prosecutor's saying is that we need additional information. So, you need something from either AquaDoc or ODNR that they can accept funds from Trumbull County to fund a, a portion of this chemical remediation.
We, we have a conglomerate of the groups. Remember, Corps of Engineers, ODNR, Cleveland Metro Parks, um, other entity biologists, people from Pittsburgh Army Corps of Engineers, the Tourism Bureau, the city of Cortland, we've had joint meetings with this stuff. They came up with, this AquaDoc is the only state-approved contractor that can do this for the lake, using this only chemical at EPA. And, uh, the state will allow us to use to treat this stuff. And then AquaDoc was contracted with Cleveland Metro Parks, they solved the problem. The state said, here's who you gotta use, the bill is.
The state went through the bidding process and I do have that bidding process that they went through.
And then, and they said, here's the total bill.
Literally, all I have is the state purchasing contract from AquaDoc, which doesn't help solve this administrative problem at all.
Okay, what they were asking for, I guess what you're missing is then the state gave a fifty thousand dollar grant. We're asking you for a hundred thousand from us and then the, they're working with, um, the feds to get the rest of the money.
Yeah, what do you need from us? What do you need?
I, I literally have nothing.
Okay.
So, what I need is, it, it depends on what you guys wanna do. I don't even, am not even clear on what you wanna do other than, than funding it. And I get that, it's a problem. I understand it's a problem. I'm not trying to stop the, the solution, but I know nothing at this point, other than I keep getting phone calls, get the language. I don't know what language you want because I don't know what you're trying to do and nobody.
We assume, I guess, apologize for that, we assume that when we have the meetings here, that the language was forwarded to you. What we, with the agenda item as it was written was forwarded to you for you to read, to see if that's legal or not in the language. Did we not get the, the agenda item language to him at the, two weeks ago when we did that? And then Didi Petrowski, Mayor Petrowski, was forwarding the whole packet of the whole, the whole program.
See, that's why, if I got from the mayor, I got the contract with AquaDoc between the AquaDoc and state of Ohio, that's all I have.
So, you got nothing from us regarding the language, the agenda item, as we had it?
Other than the original agenda item that was pulled.
You do have that.
Do you have the original?
That, that just simply said, the prosecutor's supposed to draft a contract, but we hadn't, we've not been told a contract for what? A contract for, for, the, the dollar amount has changed, I believe. We haven't been told any of the information that goes into that. And that's the issue here, is we have no information. We're, we're just being asked to, to review the language, get the language, but we don't know for what, and that's the issue.
Okay, did you send an email back out to us saying, I don't have the language to know? We're waiting for this for two weeks thinking you have it.
Yeah, I think it was two, two weeks ago, whenever it got pulled off the agenda, that was the result of the email that I had sent back to all of you guys saying, I, I don't know what we're doing, we need more information. And then the only thing I received since then was that contract from the mayor of Cortland.
Yeah.
Okay, so what more information?
I guess we need to.
I don't, I mean, I'm happy to go and find the information.
Sure.
I just need to know what I'm looking for.
I guess what we're asking for is, we as a board are, have been asked by this group to donate a hundred thousand dollars to this program.
Correct, and the original was, oh, we'll give it to the city of. Correct. And the original was, oh, we'll give it to the city of Cortland, but then as a discussion, it was better to go from the county directly to Aquadoc.
Correct.
Not to give the money to ODNR because it would go into their general fund.
Correct. And Cortland said they could set a fund up for it and then pay the bill if it was easier for us to give it to a governmental entity than a private person? Although the state already picked them as a state contracted person?
And as no, with no administrative fees. They wouldn't charge any-
Correct. So we, what we wanted to ask the prosecutor, I guess, was, can we write this hundred thousand dollar check to the city of Cortland for that? Or can we write it directly to the vendor for that? Um, and, you know, then, of course, we've figured the funds out through the auditor. But we need to know, can we write, I guess, what we're asking you, Bill, is can we write the check? Or what is the preferred route to write a hundred thousand dollar check if Morrow and I and Commissioner French go approve being a partner in the program with the amount requested by the group?
And that's-
Who do we write the check to and how do we legally do that?
Without getting into too much attorney-client communication here in, in a public meeting, there's a couple of phases. The first is making sure that we as a county have statutory authority to fund a program like this for a lake that technically lies within our county but doesn't, we don't have control over. That's, that's the first step. And we need to work with this group, whoever it is, through the state. And that's why I brought up ODNR, Army Corps. I know they're actively combating the Hydrola already there at Mosquito Lake.
They're not. They're, they're bringing the information. They haven't spent a dollar on it yet until they get the money through the partnership with us. We don't do it, they're not gonna do it.
So they're, they're ultimately requesting this money, though. They're the ones who are putting this conglomerate together to request the funding?
City of Cortland, I guess, would probably be the point person on requesting this funding. And they reached out to the state to help. The state didn't come in and say, you got a problem and here's what it costs to fix it.
Okay.
It was identified by the community and complained to us that there's a problem.
Sure.
We reached out to the entities, formed this coalition. And then in this coalition, we picked the city of Cortland as the point person to put this all together with these groups. And the meetings have been kinda orchestrated by the mayor and her assistant. Um, and we did, through that, reach out to Senator Brown's office and Senator Vance's office and David Joyce's office for funding mechanisms on the federal side.
Okay.
A longer term.
The state came in and advised on, they did this in Cleveland Metro Parks, you may wanna bring them in as an advisor, which we did. They said, we fixed it in the Cleveland Metro Parks. Here's how, here's what we did. The state, they, they, this group proposed to the state, what can we treat this with? The state provided this Aquadoc and said, we vetted these people, we've used them in other areas. We will give you fifty thousand dollars if you want for the program, but you gotta use this chemical, these people, basically, is what they said.
Sure.
You come up with the rest of the money, we are happy to provide their labor, manpower, whatever it is, to their park manager to do this. And the Corps of Engineers said, you guys do that, we'll give you our blessing and our water and our lake to do it. We understand the need for your community, but they weren't, you know, the federal funding mechanism is an act of Congress and everything else. They're working with the senator and their, and the representatives' offices to acquire that. But on our end, they're asking of us a hundred thousand dollars to put, to be able to initiate this.
Okay, so that, that answers some of the questions. I think, like I said, the first step is making sure that we as the county have statutory authority to spend that money on, on that project. Because it's a little bit of unusual situation where, a- again, it's not, it's not a lake that we control. And I just wanna be sure that we have the authority because we don't want audit findings and such for any problems down the road. I'm not sure, uh, where this has been done. Other, otherwise, you know, that's something that we could explore and we can, we can look into the authority to do it. Uh, and then, you know, from there, the question would just be more logistics is, again, is it better to pay directly, if we can pay? Is it better to pay Aquadoc directly under the state term contract? Is it better to, to go with an intergovernmental cooperative agreement? There's statutes that, that might allow for that. If, again, if we have the underlying authority to spend the money on this. That's the, that's the, the big question first in my mind. And again, I don't want anybody to get the perception that I don't think this is, it's a problem. I recognize it's an invasive species. It's, it's important to try to tackle this problem, but we've gotta make sure we're doing it the right way. That's all. And, and any information that you guys have, that you have, that you could pass along from ODNR, from the Corps, or anything like that, feel free to send it to me because it's gonna give me maybe the background that I'm totally missing in this.
We did not know. I did not know. Beth, only you knew. We had a meeting yesterday, even with the press, none of us knew that you weren't in the loop with that stuff.
Yeah.
I guess we-
That's, that's been the disconnect, apparently, isn't it?
When we sent the language down, we, we had assumed in a sense through the language, if there was more you needed on the language, we would have received some feedback or the mayor of Cortland would receive feedback or something that, I need this, or I need this, or I need that. Which I didn't-
I sent in a holding pattern after the last email, but, you know, wait. So I, I think maybe just resolve that confusion. Get me whatever information you have. We will, we will take it, we will put it together, we will try to find a way that this can lawfully be done. Uh, a- and then we'll, we'll go from there. The logistics of it, once it, once we determine whether it can be done lawfully, the logistics aren't, I don't believe it's hard. Uh, but then again, of course, you gotta make sure you have the appropriate funding source too, through, you know, the auditor's office will have to help you out with that.
Okay, that kinda clears that up. We'll, uh, we'll provide all the info. I understand it. You understand, Beth?
Yep.
Commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
And you'll be able to start looking at the statutory authority?
Yeah.
Correct? Your office will start to look at that?
We can do that. Uh, all I would ask is, if this, you know, if working with the ODNR and Army Corps, if this is the type of a program that they've done elsewhere in the state,
Yeah.
I'd love to know about it because I'd like to see how other places have handled similar problems. If they haven't, then we'll, you know, we'll try to invent it from the ground up, but it's, sometimes it's helpful to talk to other people who have been there and done it already if they've done it.
And this so, is somewhat of a, oh, you need, it's somewhat of a public emergency too.
We're being way more proactive, I think, as a group, that we solve the problem. We are being proactive and I think this is-
We, we just took for granted that you got that information.
Sure.
But we, we apologize. Uh, we, we thought that was communicated to you by, she was the point person, the mayor of Cortland.
Yep.
Uh, I thought in our one public meeting, she was gonna come down and talk to you. I don't know if you were there or not, so I know you've been out, but, um, I apologize.
And Bill, we do, we do, if it's okay, she is the point person on this. You do have permission from Commissioner French himself to deal with her, talk to her.
She has a lot of information.
Of course, anything for us on the funding.
And they're legal department.
You know, yeah, correct. So-
No, no problem, man. I'm-
But if she can provide the info, if you need something from, from us, feel free to reach out directly to me and, and we'll work through it on our end of what we need to do, but, but we, she's the point person.
Yeah.
Rather than re, me coming to you after I get all the information from her.
That's fine, yeah.
Please accept her communication as-
No problem at all.
-speaking on behalf of the group. Okay. Secondly, we had an agenda item up here, as far as when you came down for, I would imagine, the contract with Howland. You guys to represent the township of Howland.
Yes.
We've had a few issues in the past where I deal with Howland, I deal with you guys, you gotta go outside the house. And we've had it, I, I deal with all of you commissioners, you gotta go outside the house. We've had that. With as busy as you are, with as, um, the increased workload you've had the last couple of years, do we need to approve you guys working for Howland or can we tell them to go find their own counsel? So it frees up more time for you to serve the county. Is that forty-two thousand dollars really essential in your budget? Or can we cut them loose and let them, let them do their own thing? Why do they have to share counsel with us? Which could cause conflicts, delays, things like that. Are you, why is this done this way? How long has it been done this way? And are there any other people that do it this way?
Uh, yeah, the, the, I guess, the, the answer to that is, yes, there are other places around the state that do this. It is a, as, as a home rule township, we have the option to represent them under this contract, but not the mandatory duty like we do our other, uh, non-home rule townships. So in, in Trumbull County, uh, we've had this history with Howland since, I believe it was around two thousand, two thousand eleven or so, that is when we started representing them, two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen, somewhere around there. Uh, their law director that, uh, that was with them prior, came on to work as an assistant prosecutor. And, uh, as part of that, we went through this process to continue representing them through that individual as well as, uh, bringing him on to also do some work for the county. Uh, I know we did talk last year, there are cases sometimes where conflicts will come up because of things like, uh, you know, the annexation was one of the ones that was a, a recent one. Uh, you know, and I think, like I explained to you guys last year on that, just simply cutting Howland loose as a client doesn't necessarily solve that problem because we are also statutory counsel for all the other townships that are non-home rules. So in cases where they are parties to annexations, the same thing could arise regardless of whether or not we have this contract with Howland. Uh, I, my perception of it is it's a rare thing that that, that becomes a conflict issue, uh, just simply on its own. He, you know, we do get paid by Howland for a portion of that position. I will say that I don't believe that, uh, if we discontinued that contract, I don't believe that means that we could do with any less staff. Let's put it that way. So that money would need to be made up somehow to continue on with the staff that we have. We are very busy. There's no question. Um, numbers spell out. Uh, but, uh, that being said, you know, we've, we've had a good working relationship with Howland. There are things that we're dealing with them on at the moment. Uh, you know, you guys do have this, uh, you know, this authority to review the contract. Question, I guess, would be, working with Mr. Watkins, whether or not, you know, he would, you know, he supports this contract with Howland. Whether he would wanna review whether or not, you know, we have the ability to do it regardless of the commissioner's approval. And I'm not saying that, you know, we wanna be combative, obviously, but it is a longstanding relationship. The other thing is too, because of the pending matters, it might be worth considering if this is something the commissioners are really not in favor of, perhaps it's something that we discuss with Howland so that there's a plan moving forward and phasing it out over a period of time rather than doing an immediate cutoff of their legal services and having them go with someone else. Uh, you know, those are all things that I think you might wanna, you know, talk over. You might wanna talk to, to the township trustees. You might wanna talk to, to Mr. Watkins about, but, uh, you know, all I would say is that we have represented them for a number of years. My perception is it hasn't been a large problem as far as conflicts and such. Uh, a- and, you know, we obviously brought it to you guys because we are in support of the contract, but we also recognize that you guys do have, uh, you know, uh, some sort of, uh, role in the process too, so.
So we don't have contracts with any other townships.
That is correct.
Per se, financially.
That is correct. The only other-
And there are other townships that have their own legal counsel.
Correct. Yes. The only other contract I'm aware of is our one with Metro Parks that we represent them for one dollar a year. Uh, other than that, uh, the other townships, either are, are statutory clients that we represent without charge or, uh, the other home rule townships that have their own law director.
Okay. Um, are you, any more questions in regards to that? Do we know, do you remember off top of your, is there, who was their link when they call in? Like, we go to you first? Who do they go to?
Uh, their, their person, their primary contact is Jason Toth in our office. And again, he was their law director even before he came on as an assistant prosecutor, so he has history with the township. Uh, and, and that's, that's why he's continued on in that role.
Okay. And do we have any idea, or do you know how many times we've had that conflict where we had to go obtain outside counsel for annexations and or other things because of the conflict with them?
I don't, off the top of my head, know exactly how many times it's happened. I know, like I said, the, the most recent, largest one probably was that annexation.
Which cost us, we can, we can see how much we, our bill is for that.
A- and again, though, I would remind the board that there were other entities involved in that that we also represented, if I recall correctly.
Bianna Township.
Bianna Township was also, uh, one of our statutory clients involved in that annexation.
Are we statutory client ears too?
Yes.
So you could technically tell them they gotta get their own counsel instead of telling us to get our own counsel?
Oftentimes, everybody gets their own counsel. That, that's what happened with Howland as well in that case.
I know this may sound stupid, but that's my question. I, I know I've read the ORC, so I understand what you're saying with it's a statutory duty. But is there some delineation of counties are my number one priority and then townships are a second priority?
Statutory, there is not.
Okay, so, so real, so that's what you, I think that's what you're trying to ask.
Right.
How do, how does the prosecutor's office, and I guess I'm just trying to say, help us understand so, so we understand. How do you delineate, I'm not gonna take this one because it's a county conflict versus a township conflict, and who kinda overrules what, or it just doesn't? We just say, everybody get your own?
Yeah, oft- the, the way it works under ethical rules and everything else is that not every dispute between two clients becomes a conflict. We are permitted, under the rules, to work together with multiple clients as long as their interests don't become adverse. And the trick is, when the interests become adverse, and when we have clients on multiple sides of litigation or legal action, which, which essentially you guys in, in annexation matters act as the, the court essentially, then we have a, a, our client who's acting as the, the finder of fact, the court, and we also have then clients who are taking positions to either support or oppose an annexation. That's where we get into a, a tricky area. Uh, so there is no hierarchy necessarily. We just have to try to judge each case as it comes and determine whether or not it's something that we can work together with clients, even though they may not absolutely have exactly the same position, but they're working toward a common resolution, or whether their interests have become different and that, and that we cannot represent the parties in those cases. And, uh, we try to not do that if we can avoid it. Obviously, we understand that it's an expense to the county, to the township, to anybody who needs to do it. Uh, but it's, it, when we have statutorily so many clients, it's a fact of, of how it works.
So where were we on that agenda? And we dropped the agenda item off here in lieu of this, hearing this, do we add it back on? Do we talk to Howland?
I mean, right now-
I want, I want what's in the best interest of the township also. And if, if them having other counsel is in the best interest of them, you know, I, I just, I guess now we know the background. Now we know what it is. Um-
So, uh, as you mentioned, Bill, i- i- if the forty-two thousand wasn't paid by, um, wasn't paid by Howland, then, you know, we would still keep the same amount of staff. Would that mean a quicker turnaround on our opinions?
It's hard to say. I mean, obviously, uh, you know, it might give us a little bit of a, of an extra, uh, you know, help, but the bottom line is, um, you know, Howland is not a full-time job.
Right.
Uh, you know, that, that doesn't reflect a full-time person. That reflects, uh, you know, I, I don't even necessarily think it's a, a set number of hours per week, but it reflects us being their counsel. We are there on site at times, uh, every week. Uh, but as far as, as far as turnaround goes, it's hard to say. You know, we, Jason also does a lot of work for other statutory townships that are our statutory clients. Uh, it, it's, you know, it's, it's really, it's hard to quantify.
So they don't have a law director, like township trustees meetings, Jason goes to them, or?
I don't think he goes to every meeting, but he is there on site. Every, at, at least part of the time every week, helping out with things that come up and, and being there for questions and meetings on site. Again, not full-time, but-
Why don't we have somebody on site a lot of times when we have these meetings? I guess they got that question.
It's because we have very, very limited staff.
Will this help free up staff?
That's what I mean, will this help free up staff if Jason can come to our meetings instead?
I'm still not sure that that's gonna happen all the time.
If we're paying the bill, if we're putting it in the budget, if we're replaced, still, still giving the same amount of money, that forty-two thousand dollars is coming to us, to the general fund, I would imagine. And then we do the budget out to that department. We keep the budget the same, we free him up from having to go to Howland. We can't redirect his services or your services to come here.
To say it, to, you know, work on-
To our meetings. So every week when we have, we've rewritten things multiple times over the last year. We've had to do amendments. We got amendments on here today because the wording was wrong. Wouldn't it behoove the taxpayers of Trumbull County to have more of a tighter relationship with our prosecutor's office? To help us do things right the first time or be on site to answer questions, speed up the process quicker?
Well, it, it, frankly, that-
Just like with Hydrola. If someone was here two weeks ago, they would've known what we were looking for. And we wouldn't have had two weeks go by and then we find out, we don't even know what we're looking for, and now here we are two weeks later.
The level of, the level of demand for service that we have from all of our clients right now, that would likely take an extra person altogether. I, I'll, I'll be honest. Uh, we have right now-
I'd be okay with that.
We have about fifty items on our pending list right now, uh, of, of, of work for various clients. You know, you guys, the board's certainly an important client, but we also have a lot of other clients. And, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, i- in a perfect world, to be more hands-on would, would be great. But we have right now three people- But we have right now three people in our office that are in the Civil Division managing township and county clients across the county. And we have one that's dedicated virtually solely to tax foreclosures because of the workload in that department. And, you know, it's not, right now, we're doing the best we can to get things back, to get contracts reviewed for various departments. You guys have been using a lot of the ARPA funds for improvements around the county. It's great, but it's also, it's time intensive to do contract reviews, to do legal opinions, to keep things functioning day to day. So, you know, like I said, I think that if what you're looking for is more hands-on, I'm not disputing that that wouldn't be great in a perfect world. It's just that right now, we, if we came to meetings, if we did that kind of stuff, we'd be so far behind in other opinion requests that we, I don't know.
What I'm saying is, he's already going to meetings there anyway. If he's already doing a workload there, if we take that workload totally off of him, that frees at least his time up of what he spends per week.
It would free some time, yeah.
If he's there even one day a week and we had him here one day a week, that helps us. That helps move our stuff along.
Mentally.
Right, yeah, hugely. I mean, I see that, that's an aspect I never realized. If he's hands-on there, we don't have hands-on here, not picking on the department in any way.
And I don't want you to, I don't want to overstate that he's there for every meeting. That's not how it is, so.
Yeah, but, oh, I don't want to go, that's all right.
So, do you want to do more? You want to leave it the way it is and do more research and do a talk to Howland?
I'd like to talk to Howland, see what their thoughts are on it, on the level of service and if they, you know.
Let's leave it off for this week then, because it did, it is backdated anyway already.
And I agree with Bill, if there is a period, if we do make a change, there has to be a phase-off period.
Sure.
I don't want to leave them high and dry or anything.
Sure, no, I want the worst-
And I'm not saying there will be, I'm just-
I want what's best for the county. What's best for the county is us doing business quickly, getting opinions quickly, not redoing work. And I want what's best for the township also, so they get a level of service that they are comfortable with if they're paying for it and they don't feel cheated that they're paying part of the bill and they're waiting also because of the immense workload that our Prosecutor's Office has. So, let's look at that and then maybe readdress next week going forward with a long-term plan for something like that would be and get some input over the next week from-
I agree.
-citizens of Howland and the administration there and trustees. We may have some people there that wish they had more service, wish they had someone there every meeting or every, had a law director on site with an office there and some-
What I understand, they are having, their administrator is retiring or has retired, I believe.
She's retired, rehired, yeah.
Rehired.
No, but she's retiring from that.
Really?
Yes.
She rehired from the rehire.
Yes.
I mean, retire, rehire, retire, re-retire.
So, they're going to be interviewing her administrators there.
Right, so they're going to probably need a lot of legal advice to aid them in that process.
I would assume, yeah.
You would think. You can't replace her years of work and dedication with, you know, just a brand-new hire.
I was just told that yesterday informally by one of the trustees, so take that for what, you know. But he said that they're interviewing administrators because St. George is not going to be there.
Well, that to me sounds like they're going to have a lot of legal issues, questions coming up.
Yes, and maybe they want to go in a different direction. I don't, you know, who knows with the new administrator, new direction.
We don't know if we don't ask.
Right.
We're just assuming.
Right.
Anything else you need from us, Bill, while you're here?
Nope.
Feeling better, hopefully?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Mr. Spitholz, do you have something? I saw you here, you're just observing. Put your name and where you're from, sir.
Uh, Bill Spitholz, David Township. I've been spending a lot of time, a lot of town, I'm down here at the town. And is it possible to get more handicap parking around the town where there's only like two spots tonight? You've got to try to beat over here from our early sometimes get a spot to park over there.
We are in the process of reviewing the parking situation and it sounds like, and that's something we can talk about too. We need to go out for a bid apparently. If we have a gentleman who wants to lease us property behind us, but we can't just pick him and go with him, we have to go out for a bid on looking for parking in the downtown area and see who wants to submit things for us to provide more parking. And I'm open to leasing more parking spots for employees and for the public. And then with that, looking at the handicap issue, we do have the handicap in the back parking lot, which is a far walk, especially in the cold like today. And on Harmon Street on the side, there are parking spots there, a few. And a few that sometimes are used, some are used, some are not. Out front, I don't believe there's any handicap out front.
Two at the jail.
There's two at the jail?
There's two across the street and there's two or three along the side of the building.
Right, and then if you go-
Believe it or not, believe it or not, up until three years ago, there were only two handicap spots there. We actually added another four. So, there's actually been six, six of five, I believe. We had four spots.
Sometimes they're very harsh on that.
On Harmon. We had to work with the City of Warren on that because that's their stuff. So, we were able to negotiate that with them.
And really, I would like to see more standard parking lot things out front and maybe Harmon. I would love to see that be 30-minute parking only. If someone's just going to run and get a title, run in and drop something off, run in. We don't have those types of spots where, when you come to county and do business, you're not here all day unless you're coming to this meeting. But people just want to stop and to get something signed, people that need to do that. Even for our own employees, if Gary came over here and needed my signature, he's got to park wherever he can find parking where we've got the two little spots up front that are accessible for the court records for title stuff. But we should have something where people that are coming in and do quick business, get something from the recorder, get a signature, make a copy, drop something off. We need to have that fluid in and out, in and out stuff and then work with the powers that be to monitor that to make sure the spots stay open as they're intended to do. You know, there is abuse, of course, with a lot of the parking things. And I've seen cars parked on the side where it says "two-hour parking", and they were there for four or five hours and they didn't do anything about it. Raph didn't do anything about it, even after phone calls. So, yeah, part, the whole big parking thing needs looked at. I appreciate you acquiring on that, but it is on our radar to do something with that. Sam, you got a question on that or?
No, I have-
I see you parked way the hell in the back, so it's going to happen.
I have another comment, one other comment.
Yes, sir.
Sam, one of my Chris Trumbull County treasure, three thank yous. Number one, thank you, thank you to Ashley. We kind of stuck Ashley a little bit today. Mr. Martin is, decided to go on a trip for work, by the way, and got stuck in an airport. I think he's been sleeping in Texas Airport for four days now.
Yeah.
Is it four days or three days?
He moved to Charlotte today.
Oh, he got to Charlotte, that's my blessing, thank you. I had my daughter came from Mexico. She was out for work in Mexico. She got stuck in Chicago Airport for three days. So, yeah, my heart goes out to Matt because I was a nervous wreck.
Plane strings and all will be.
But thank you to Ashley and the wonderful job TMP has done. You all see it every day now. One of our beloved projects was the Ween Building. It is now down and there's still more work to come with some landscaping and everything there. So, we're very proud of that job. Thank you for all your hard work there. Second, thank you to Maintenance Department, to Bill and his team. I've been here since 2000, holy cow, 2000. Been here a long time. And been complaining about the front counter of my center office since the day I walked in here in 2000. And Bill and his team came up with a wonderful idea there. They put some, it's planking on my front counter now and it just looks outstanding. So, a thank you for that. And also thank you to the Commissioners for accepting our resolutions today and for the payment for the Ween decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, you have some stuff to work on.
Bill Hart, Trumbull County Maintenance. This is going to go on the January 24th agenda. I'm giving you the tabulations to select a engineering group for the Dog Pound. So, we can get this moving even though we're at a standstill hold pending the separation of the legal, since there's a note on the AWL property. Once we get that taken off their note from the bank, then it will be solely Trumbull County's. And if something was to happen to AWL, we still own our property and the property is vacated for some reason or whatever. But that's just, we're in a legal, we're in a legal thing to get it off the note from AWL, so. But this will be on for the 24th.
But it will have no, that note will have no bearing on us.
No bearing on us. Once it gets separated off their note, then we're good to go forward again. But right now, it's sitting at the Title Office.
Yeah.
Valley Title, I should say, not our Title Office, till we get that litigation back from the Attorney Button from AWL.
Where are we on the Engineers' Building group?
The, I just got sent the qualified bidders or qualified statements from the contractors. I am selecting two from the Engineers' Office to grade these two companies, five, four companies now, so.
So, another company jumped in in addition to the three initial?
Yes, yes. So, they're going to grade those once I get those sheets put together.
Do you decide are you going to grade them all for beginning again? Or are you going to leave the first score is frozen, just grade the last question for the first three and grade the fourth one on all six?
They'd have to be all four new because of the fact now that we have a new submitted proposal. So, that wouldn't be fair to that individual as well, so. Questions will go out, be graded on all six questions as advertised.
Okay. So, we followed our advertisement to the T with this new review. And with the reviewers, different, three different?
One's the same, Tim Saxon, T is the one that actually put that out for the advertisement.
He's the criterion architect per the design-build requirements. Do we have to use him?
You have to use him, yeah.
Okay.
And then two from the Engineers' Office are going to grade.
Okay.
And once we get those, once I get that sheet put together and sent out and once I get those back, then we can move forward with that.
Sounds fair. Sounds, I mean, nothing's totally fair in this situation. It's unfortunate that it happened that way and, um... But we got to do what's fair, as fair can be, I guess, with that. If it was not ever tested the way it was done, shame on us, our bad. And we're going to make it right the best way we can.
Yes. For the 24th, that'll be on the agenda for the workshop the 23rd, just so that you have the town, the sheets.
Thank you. Okay. Before we get into Martha Zarpa, does anyone else have anything else for the good of Trumbull County? Do you have any information? I think you're, you're new to here, can we, what can we answer for you?
I can't really answer anything. I am, um-
Your name again, of course.
I am Elaine Cross. I'm from Portage County and I'll pass out my cards here and stuff. I am actually on your March 19th ballot. I am running against Dave Joyce. So, talking about your representative and your Senators to try and get some work done with these water issues. I just want to know what's kind of happening here.
I just, you confess he's not at the end of the meeting as well.
Oh, okay.
Like officially part of the meeting, I don't want to cross politics in here.
That's fine.
You can talk as a citizen here, not as a candidate or something?
Yeah, I'm just, and that's why I'm here. I just want to know what's going on in the county, some of the issues you're dealing with, how you handle it. I love these work sessions because you can really hear. And I think more citizens should participate and come and listen and take part in what's happening so they understand and don't get the thing in the newspaper and go, "Why'd they do that?" Well, they didn't do it just overnight. You did it with a lot of plan and I appreciate the way this group has been working together, very talkative and informative and just, okay, let's check it out.
We appreciate that, thank you so much.
Before you go into ARPA, I have a payment request form for our Home Suror Treatment System program through the Ohio EPA and I've got to get back to work, so.
Okay, Nick Coggins from the Plaid Commission.
Okay, Nick.
I'm getting the same thing.
Gary Newbauer from the Sanateria Engineering. Hey, Nick, you got some homework to do today?
So, I just got to compile it up for you. I have all the information just in different places.
Okay.
I'll make this real quick.
Yes, Alexandra Divincenzi Bush.
I'll make this real quick. Lisa, we had sent out a note to all elected officials, directors and department heads back in August of how to submit your agenda items. There's been some, there's still been struggles with agenda items coming in and I hear you guys talking to the prosecutor about how we can be more efficient. We also just feel like, you know, department heads should be sending stuff to prosecutors beforehand. Thank you. Prosecutors should be sending stuff to, you know, we have to follow the process too so that way we don't get stuff on the agenda that shouldn't be on the agenda or vice versa. Right, wrong or different, we're all going to make mistakes. But if we follow this procedure, then we won't get ourselves into that situation. Um, so, there's been, we still have some departments who won't even send their stuff over in Word document. I know that sounds silly. It should be a really simple request, but also I think as department heads, and I got to stress this, I know my business better than anybody in this room. How is Lisa supposed to know what you're doing on a roofing project? How is Lisa supposed, and I'm just using you as an example, Mike, sorry to interrupt. How is Lisa supposed to know what, you know, Bill Hart's doing on XYZ? We need to provide her the pertinent information as the department heads up front so we can make sure that everything is coming on the agenda flawlessly, seamlessly and that we've done our due diligence as department heads before it even gets to this point. So, we just wanted to reiterate that and ask the Commissioner's thoughts on reiterating that if things continue or, you know, right, wrong or different, it's an accident, no big deal, but if they come over, you know, and they don't look like what they need to be, does Lisa have the authority, do we have the authority to say, "We need you to revise this before we put this on"? You got to follow the, you got to follow the procedure.
I mean, they're supposed to give it to me the way that I'm going to be reading it at the meeting or as close as possible. And a lot of them don't do that. They'll say, "Here."
I've actually, um, seen-
My backup.
I've actually seen Lisa get a pile.
We can put a resolution together by the Board to do that.
I, I think it's a good idea only because I've been watching.
I can go back though to Rosalyn. And, I mean, nothing would fly. You know, she would call me, I would, "Oh, no." Oh, yeah. Because this was, it has to be exact, you didn't get on.
Well, and it does. I mean, and that stops the spin before it even happens, right? So, I just think it's really important with everything, you know, new department heads, a lot of new changes, no big deal, but we all need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. We've stressed this once. I think it's time, I've actually been watching what they go through. I've been at their office with Lisa when she got a stack this big of, "Here, put this on the agenda", with nothing, just, "Here's all the information."
No, that's-
That can't fly.
No, no.
It can't. And it's not fair to her and it's not fair to the Commissioners either.
Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor. One of the things that I've tried to do is when we have something that's been like a, like this most recent one with the Dog Pound. It was a resolution that was done in the past. I looked it up because we can do that now online on the Commissioner's website. We can look up old agendas and we can find things and then we have the wording so that we can put it and send it to you.
And that's all I'm asking everyone to do.
And the other thing is, and some of the, this happened with mine, some of them didn't necessarily have the Ohio Revised Code site. Look it up and put it in there.
Sure.
So that we have that and then the next time we need it, it's there.
Or if you need a fund number, ask for a fund number in a DM. Don't, you know, don't wait and then we're still trying to find the fund number. We got to get ahead of these things.
Will this be put in the new policy and procedures manual for all departments?
I actually, so it was already a memo and I just updated it to basically say at the end, please be advised that if in the upcoming months, as we update our policies and procedures, if agenda items are not submitted properly, they will be sent back to the submitter, period.
And if they don't- And they might not make it on the agenda.
And I think most, Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor, and I think most of the folks that-
The authority you have in your position.
Um, righties know that if they need a fund number, they just need to call.
Got to ask.
Christie will help. Christie's really good at doing that.
Sure.
And making sure that it's right the first time.
And I'm asked that we do this at the, can continue to do it, but do it at the beginning of the meeting when everybody's tuned in, when everybody's-
Yeah, sorry.
No, 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 that's, no, we're going to continue to hammer this home.
Yeah.
So that people get this message.
I could save this for next week before we reset because I have, I mean, I have, it's already done and I didn't reinvent anything. I just stressed that.
We just added.
Yeah, on behalf of just causing any spin or stopping any spin before it happened. So, maybe next week at the workshop, I'll just reiterate at the beginning and that will call it a day.
Okay, one thing I got, Commissioner, is we have the lunchroom downstairs, complete, painted. Machines are there, functioning well, employees are using fingerprints, they seem to be received pretty well. We've got to get the furniture in. Um, we've gotta get the furniture in, and then Beth has the artwork that she did from the tourism bureau. Um, but what, what I realized through dealing with Sarah, is that we have to set a budget of what we can do with the furniture down there. The, the tables and chairs we have are pretty much junk, and with as nice as it looks down there with the investment, we wanted to be a place where people feel comfortable when they get on for lunch, where they can unwind for a half hour, hour, half hour, fifteen minute break, whatever it is. Um, wanted to be as user friendly as possible. I had brought up the, the idea of charging ports for the phones. When we looked at tables, I have some, uh, bids, I have a bid for a hundred and ten dollars a chair from Gasser Chair, which is a Trumbull County owned company. Um, they have some used chairs that they refurbished, and he said he's got about a thousand of them that they got back in, they rotate them through casinos and restaurants and things like that. Um, but I'd like, when I talked to it, Bill says, "How much am I gonna spend on table, how much on a chair"? Some of these chairs that we're looking at were as high as three hundred and fifty bucks a chair and...
When you say chairs, what type of chairs?
Well, there's, what we're envisioning down there, we initially were gonna have a bar, like with high back chairs where they had a ledge, kinda like a coffee shop type thing. Instead, we decided to go with three of the high top tables, and with, uh, two chairs with each of those. Where people can have some privacy, where if they wanna eat lunch with someone else, they can do that against the wall. And then we were looking at three or four other tables with four chairs around them. So I'm looking at, initially, if, if we can get twelve chairs, those tables and a couple of tables, I'd be, be looking in some more of the two grand mark, and with the other high top tables. You know, I'd, i- if I could get appropriated, to furnish that with over three thousand dollars for tables and chairs.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to ask...
We need to have it. I mean, we put work into there, and we got new...
We do, and it looks nice, and we want it to be something, something comfortable that way. You know, I'd also thought about, you know, the, do we have a wall there that I would like to officially, I guess, ask? Um, I'd like to dedicate it to Rick Muccio, who does political cartoons in the Tribune for the last thirty years.
Yeah.
He's an art teacher at, uh, JFK, I believe, and for him to republish, redo some of his best work that he has there. Um, ones that are non- threatening cartoons, nothing that was a slam at you, me, or any other commissioner.
Those would be funny, though.
Nothing showing a former commissioner going off to jail, handcuff him, or, you know, anything like that. It's, it's, it's...
He has permission to do mine. I thought they were cute.
Well, and it is. It's the history of Trumbull County in a satire way.
Yeah.
And he's covered some memorable events from nine one one to other things.
Sure.
And he'd like to do something representing each of the counties, or each of the townships in a square, and then some of the ones like, maybe, you know, one of the ones he did with the tribute to the athletes in the county, Corey Stringer thing, or, uh... You know, something around the thing, some of his memorable ones that were holidays or momentous events that he, that he did. To do that wall, he's looking at about twenty-five hundred dollars to repurpose those things for the work, to go through his old collection, pick out what he did, redo some things, redo the sign. Twenty-five dollars to him, um, to do that, and then, uh, whatever the price of the printing and framing would be to put that stuff on that. This is the orange wall when he walked in, that wall on the left.
Yeah.
And that'll be a wall dedicated to, to him. We can have a plaque with his name, years of service, and a gratitude type of thing. We do a resolution to him for all the things he did. Many people buy the Tribune just to read the cartoon. And this is a guy who, without a guy like him, our history has been, could be tainted, our history has been captured by his creative mind and imagination. And, um, I think we need to honor that, good or bad. I mean, he slammed on me as much as he slammed on anybody else. Um, but we can see the history of our towns and stuff in, through his eyes, and I think it'd be a great tribute. So looking at like twenty-five hundred for that than the printing, and that could be a later thing. He's, but I, I'd like to prove that for him to start working on that.
Yep.
So I don't know, is that something we could just verbally do here, is it being an administrative thing, or is that something where we need a resolution to dedicate?
Question for Danza.
Yeah, um...
I mean, I, I don't wanna say yes.
But to get furniture and stuff, like whenever I went in my office and they painted the wall, or we bought furniture for, um, the other departments, other things or whatever, I don't think that required a resolution. Is that an administrative thing where we can, we can allot that or budget that, or should I ask that?
I, I wish I could answer that, cause I, I just don't wanna speak out of school and say something that's legally wrong and...
Okay. I will ask him, but if, if it's okay with him, would you, would you be okay with approving?
Of course, of course.
Three thousand for furniture, at least, to get that started, so we could finish that up and people have a place to sit?
Of course. We just wanna go about it the right way, that's all.
Yes, of course we wanna do that. You know, but we, we, uh, it looks great down there. I just wanna move forward on that without it, you know, people are kinda waiting here and, and, uh... Okay.
Yep.
So if that's okay with you, I'll check with him, and then when we come to the other stuff, later down the road or whatever, then we'll address it at that time.
Absolutely.
All right, Martha, all yours.
I do have something else, so if I can...
You go ahead with that.
Expedite maybe. I'm sorry, I'm trying.
Go ahead.
No, no, no.
I'm, I'm entering hour eighteen of my fast, just so you know.
Then you need to expedite. All right. So, uh, ARPA, that was the last thing?
Yeah, well, I had a couple things besides ARPA, but you said you had something.
Well, no, no, I, I had something I had to go to, but, um, I'm okay, I'm, I'm just saying.
Oh, I thought you meant you had something, something. All right, I'll get as fast as I can.
No, that's...
Before we go to ARPA, though, just a couple things I wanted to point out. You had asked about the dog license and why we double it. That is an ORC, ORCC thing. And it says the auditor shall, which means I have to do it.
Yep, I got you.
Okay. And then, um, just to defend, um, Mr., the prosecutor's office just a little bit. The agreement that we had to amend did not come from the prosecutor's office. That was Attorney Rogers. So just letting you know.
No, no, that's, that's, I'm just saying there are things, there are other ones we did where we're like, oops, we did wrong.
Yeah, but, and some, some of those were not...
But it happened.
Yeah, that, it does happen, and sometimes people don't wait to hear facts from Mr. Danzo and rush things on the agenda.
Well, and that's what hopefully does.
Yep, yep, yep. All right, um, so, as far as my notes here, and go, I'll go over this as quickly as I can. There were no new approvals issued from, um, Ms. Rogers yet, approvals wasn't there. Um, the land bank resolutions, we covered, we covered, um, Bishop Herons, uh, and the community family outreach. Uh, I will, once I get that back, that fifty thousand, I've taken that off the yes, I'm gonna put it back, just to save it, all right, so we know it's there. So that'll, your yes list will get amended before next week. Um, Levisburg did, uh, send that reward, rewarded request, and it was sent to Legal along with the other three requests from last week's meeting. All the requests highlighted on gold on the yes sheet, so you have one, two, three, four, you have eight highlighted in gold. So those are all the requests that we're awaiting, that have been submitted, and we're awaiting resolutions on.
Okay, with that, can you, or have Mr. Masaki reach out to Tony, and please ask her to have two more at least for us next week, so we can keep this process rolling on?
He is, he is reaching out as often as he can, and, but I will...
I mean, we got two for this week, but I wanna, I don't wanna go a week where we're not doing that. We got too many backed up to do that.
All right, I'll put it on my list. All right, um, Ben Kyle, uh, who is mayor of Hubbard, called, um, with regard to, and I know he's spoken to you about this.
Yeah.
He had, he had a request that he made personally long ago, before the, before the, um...
Portal.
Portal or anything, and so, and like, some of that was actually taken care of with the maple wood sanitary with, through sanitary. But he hasn't had a chance to do a request, an actual request. So, I did give him a blank application. I explained where we are right now in this whole process. Um, that would go when it comes back onto the maybe sheet, and there's a few on that sheet that have come, that were ones that came in after you guys reviewed, uh, that, that review that you did in October. My suggestion, when you, when you get to that sheet, which we are a long way from getting to, back to, is to look at those first, the ones you haven't looked at yet. Just, just, that's my suggestion. But I did give him a blank, blank application, told him to send it back to me. When I get that one, it will go onto the maybe sheet, and it will go, um, and I'll let you guys know it's there. It'll also go on the commissioner's drive, so you'll have it available to look at, all right? Like I've done with all of them. Um, on the, originally on the allocated promise sheet that I inherited, all of the fairground, and this is the blue sheet, all blue sheet. Um, all of the fairground projects were lumped into one line item with a total of one million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, sixty-eight dollars. I had reason to look more closely at this line item and discovered a couple of issues. First of all, it was based on the original estimates, which changed, but the number was never changed, and again, this predates my involvement in this. So, the number was never changed, so that number's incorrect. Um, although the engineering costs for some of the projects were approved, they were not included in the number either. So what I've decided is the sheet that you have now, the, um, allocated promise sheet, um, has them every project separated. So we no longer have one line item for all the agricultural, all the egg society, all the fairground projects. Each one is delineated. Um, I also created a little mini spreadsheet just for this, these notes, so you can see what the differences were and understand why we have a different number for that one, for those line items, or different numbers. Um, and the difference in the original estimate. So, for the horse brown roof, barn roof, which is completed, um, the original estimated, estimate was ninety-five, five. The actual amount that was approved and, and, um, utilized was one seventeen for a difference of twenty-seven, or, uh, twenty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-four, five dollars. The annex building roof, which is also completed, the original estimate on that was eighteen thousand, five fifteen. We got it done, fortunately. Mike got it done very well for the sixteen, five seventy-three, which did save us a little bit of money.
That was Bill's.
Sorry, Bill. I'm sorry, Bill.
Please share credit.
Okay, okay, um...
We get it done.
So there were, that was good, cause we actually saved a little bit of money on that one. Um, the parking lot, which is completed, was much higher than the original estimate, and that was because of the drainage situation that had to be remedied in order for it to be a permanent solution to the parking, or a more permanent solution to the parking, rather than just a temporary fix. So that was originally at one twelve, one hundred twelve, nine eighty-eight, and it came in at, at what was approved and paid for at one fifty, eight forty-nine, seventy-five. The difference was thirty-seven thousand, eight sixty-one, seventy-five. The four H building, the original estimate that we had, that we were, that, that original number that we had for the whole project was based on, was seven fifty-nine, which is the actual engineer's estimate, but we wanted to add to it more overage, so we've got eight fifty allotted for that. This is one that's not been taken care of. Um, we are just, so you know too, because we had some issues with these, um, approvals, the resolutions and the agreements, or the resolutions are, were done sort of separately for these projects, and they weren't, the original ones, or we hadn't done the one for the four H building, that's in process, that's out for, um, Attorney Rogers to do, as well as the commercial, the restrooms. So the restrooms were, the original estimate was two fifty-three, um, because the, the engineering was done in-house. Um, we, we brought that down to two forty-seven, five. It's actually brought down to two twenty-five, but we did the, we did, we...
Hard cost, two twenty-five.
Hard cost, two twenty-five, but we allocated more.
Right.
For overage, so we may have less, less than that, but, but we're hoping we won't have...
That can get rolled over into that.
Right, hopefully, yeah, yeah.
For four H building.
Sure, sure. And then, um, the difference on that is, again, a little bit less, fifty-five hundred. Um, engineering was never allocated for, and it was for several of the projects, the original en- engineering. Um, it was approved at forty-three hundred. We only spent thirty-six hundred, but it was never allocated within on the spreadsheet. So, I had to put that in as well. So what we...
And we're done with that, that contract.
Yeah, right, right, and we did, we took, we had that seven hundred sitting out as a PO, and it's been gone.
Yeah.
I told Sarah to let it go.
Yeah, let it go, right.
Um, so, that's thirty-six hundred, and so what we end up with, and the original line item that I had was one million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, sixty-eight. We're at, with the projected cost and the completed cost, at one million, three eighty-five, five twenty-two, eighty-five, for a difference of a hundred and forty-six thousand, four fifty-four, eighty-five. So that, all of the numbers that I have now reflect that, that I'm giving you today. Um, now, we're gonna have other things because of the fifty thousand that it's not going to reflect, but unfortunately, we'll, we'll get back to that, but...
Are we, are we, just stupid question. The ARPA funds we started out with is thirty-eight million, five fifty-seven. Are we collecting interest on that? Is that putting in our bank?
That sits, and it gets into the, it's in the fold account where we get interest. We have that with the star, Ohio star, so that it's...
So we can't add that interest on to this, have more money to spend on it, that we're just...
Well, I mean, you could take...
We're making profit off of that?
Well, but that goes to the county. I mean, ultimately, it, it benefits us. It just doesn't, we just, they, it wouldn't be in the ARPA fund. All right.
It's not part of the thirty-eight, right.
Right, right. I mean, obviously, you're gonna, it, it adds to the interest that we get, but it's all, it's all...
Right, but the slower we spend the money, the more money we're making off of it.
It's pooled, but it's pooled.
So if we go over a little bit on money given out to towns...
So it's pooled, so I don't, it would have to be delineated in some way, but it's, you know, we're part of the state where it's pooled, right? So we get a certain percentage, we'd have to sit there and figure out what that is. But again, that gets utilized, it's in our general fund, so...
Yep.
Hey, money, money.
Making money, after money.
Well, yeah, it's a, it's a benefit I...
That's right, but, so we waited last minute to spend all the ARPA money, we might've just made another couple mil.
Okay. Yep. But it's, 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 you're gonna get it, if you use it for, you're, we're using it for other things, because it ends up as part of our general fund, all right?
Um, first off, Hubbard, yes, they did verbally, and they, they, the old school ways, when they submitted the request right out of the gate. And we were fair to every other township. We gotta be fair to Hubbard. They've been beat up a lot lately. Hubbard has not had a request. I think they should be able to submit the request, put it in the maybe when we go to address the next round. Those would be one of the top ones we consider, being that they didn't get anything from...
There are a couple that are like that, and I will make sure that when I add it to the maybe sheet, that I mark those on that sheet, so that when we go, you guys go back to reconsider, you guys realize that those are ones that you hadn't considered yet.
Correct.
All right? Are there any other questions?
And just to reiterate on the fairgrounds, so, so what we're saying then, is with the two outstanding projects, there's not enough money that we originally allocated.
Right, but I've, I've, I've just re, I just put that, it's on the sheet now.
Yeah.
It's how much, I, because that was a promised project.
Yes.
So I, I changed the amount on that sheet, and everything what we had, that, I, the amount is what it actually is now.
Right.
So our, it increased our, our allocated and promised by a hundred and forty-six, four fifty-four.
Yeah, we're not way over, we're just...
No, and our savings still there.
And, and, and you guys, you, these are two more projects, hopefully, we've over budgeted for those, and we'll have a little bit that we can return. But we wanna make sure that we cover those, because those are ones that were promised.
I don't wanna fall short.
Yeah, they're expected, though, yeah.
Yes, they're expected, yes.
And, and I apologize for it not being accurate. However, I had no reason to question that.
Right.
As I went through these...
We thought they weren't, though.
Yeah, we, yeah, and I know you did, because we, we, I go, "Does this look right to you"? Yeah, it looks right to me. And, and I feel like if I could do this, if I could go back in time, I would go back and I would have you roll out those projects individually, and, and, so that, in the way that I just did it. But I can't go back in time and...
The way it was submitted at the time, it was submitted as a group.
Right, well, and the reason that it was broken up was because, initially, was because of, um, it was over a million.
Right.
So that was why the resolutions were broken apart. But also, I kinda think it's good if we can delineate exactly what we're spending by project, even if it is a group of projects for one thing, it's better.
I would say hindsight's twenty-twenty.
Always, yes.
And we know a lot more now, because we've, I've actually...
We're doing it.
We did the drawings, we did the, but, you, you know, a year ago, it was just an idea.
Right.
And there was no, you know, there was no one saying, "Hey, you're gonna do this project". It was just, it was out there as an idea.
And, and again, it wasn't, you know, um...
And the estimates came from their architect, which they submitted to us. Those weren't our estimates.
Right.
And we looked at it, we're like, hey, we're...
We ran with the projects, cause we could save money by just bringing out bids.
Right, and it's...
Instead of hiring the architect to do it.
It's...
Too good.
It, 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 you know, it is what it is. I just, when I reviewed this original sheet that I inherited, which is very different than what I have now. I looked at it as one big project, and if I knew then what I knew now, I would've said, "Oh, we need to divide this up", but it was just me trying to get it organized. Okay, that's, that's all in that pile, that's good, we got it, and I just didn't recognize it.
And we can't even blame the Fairborn, cause they just, I mean, we look at those, those letters that we got, they're from, they're from twenty-one, it's twenty-eight. They're, they're old estimates.
Yeah, it's old estimates, and I, they, but here's the thing, for me, is, you see how I fix things now? Like when you come in with, um, a change order, I go, "Okay, where is that on my spreadsheet"? And I make sure it gets added or subtracted, so that every, or I say, if I'm gonna subtract it, "Should I subtract it?", or "Should we allow for a little bit more?", just in case. I try to make sure that it's accurate. I try to make sure that it's accurate. Um, Mr. Masaki, God bless him, is an attorney. He's not an accountant, neither am I, but I own a business. I get, I gotta, I gotta keep track of, gotta keep track of the pennies, so the dollars keep track of themselves. And so, I get it, and he didn't necessarily get it. And it's, you know, again, I'm not gonna belabor it, we, I'm hungry and moral hesitant, so, yeah.
Just one, one last little thing with this. I talked to Braceville trustee the other day. We, we approved an ambulance for them, and it's an amount of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And the trustee I talked to said, "We don't need an ambulance, we just bought a brand new one." He's like, "The other trustee submitted it without talking to us. Can we redo that somehow? Can we repay ourselves for the ambulance we just bought? Or do we have to go buy a new ambulance"? He's like, "'Cause we just bought one, we just pay ourselves back the one we already bought."
I don't think you can use that money. I don't think you can use that money.
Yeah, theirs is, theirs is way down on the list.
Yeah.
And they actually, I mean, like, they submitted this in November.
Right, well, this was when we said, "You didn't apply for anything yet", and then they submitted the request, and the trustee submitted the request, they already got the funding? No, no, this, this is just, this is one of the later requests, they were the one, they were the ones that didn't have a request.
Yeah.
Right, and then-
So they submitted it late, which we opened the portal up for them to allow them to do that, and put them in the maybe call or whatever.
The portal is my email address, but go ahead.
And, and so, I guess one of the trustees submitted, "We want a new ambulance at this price"? The other one that I talked to the other day, the AMA, he said-
For something they bought.